Okay, good to go, Lynn. Okay, super. Good evening, this is the regular meeting, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two of the Planning and zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, would you kindly explain how this hybrid meeting will be run by yourself?
Sure, this is a hybrid meeting, it's both in person and on Zoom.
Sorry, did I say, sorry Lynn, did I say June? Did I say June? Okay, July, sorry. Okay, let's get going.
So it's a hybrid meeting, there'll be in Zoom and on person, those in the room will have an opportunity to speak first on items that have, take public comment, and then we'll take comment from those on Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you're not a member of the commission or speaking on a matter, please keep your video off.
Okay, thank you Lynn, roll call, John Goodwin, I am here, Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Radman.
Here.
Mr. Chris.
Here.
Mrs. Scornia.
Here.
Ms. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Cassavant.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Herring. Not here, Mr. Bash.
Here.
Mr. Knack.
Here.
Okay, super. All regular commission members are here, so we will not have any alternate seatings. Before we get going, a couple of announcements. Item number six thirty-nine Locust will not be opened, we expect to open that at the August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting. That said, a related item, item five, will be heard tonight, and item number ten, Burtis, eleven twenty-one twenty-five Burtis will not be open tonight, we expect to open that on August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. The agenda has become a little lighter than it was, but I kindly ask applicants, public and commissioners to, as always, we'll give full hearings to all applications, but we do have a lot to get through, so if everybody could be, as I've said before, brevity is a pretty good quality to have. Couple of additional items, and I'll repeat this as we get to it, when we hear fifty-one Main Street, we will not be taking public input tonight. Okay, we'll be listening to the applicant. The commissioners will be asking questions, the advisors to the commission will have the opportunity to ask questions, but we will not be taking public input probably until the August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting, if we don't do a special meeting in between. Seven fifty-one Weed Street, when we get to that, we will be taking any public input, but only members of the public who have did not already address the commission. And then further on seven fifty-one, we'll talk more about it when we get there. But we are awaiting applicant responses to our advisors, the public and the commission. And commissioners, if you do have additional questions for seven fifty-one Weed, please pull those together before the August twenty-third meeting. So let's get going, regular meeting mode. Item number one, one oh five Elm Street, upon application, David Rucci, Lampert Twoian Rucci, authorized agent, Donald Hersham, owners for site plan approval, section six twelve B one, to allow the development of six hundred and sixty-five square feet of second floor space in the retail A-zone at one oh five Elm Street, Mr. Rucci.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, David Rucci, Lampert Turner, Rucci in New Canaan, this evening I'm here to represent the Hersham family who own property at one oh three, one oh five Elm Street, most of you know that spot as where Soleil is, and what we're talking about this evening is the, actually the space next door. So our client is the Hospitality Group, that is the, that runs Soleil Restaurant, who's been in town for quite some time now. If you could, Lynn, Adam Zaka and Ramsey Zaka are the owners in the Hospitality Group, and Fadi Rascal is actually the architect, and I'm sure that Fadi is gonna do most of the heavy lifting this evening, as far as the architecture goes, but if you could just open up the slideshow to start, please Lynn, that would be great.
Sure, do they wanna, do they wanna present? They could just raise their hands on the screen.
Sure, so Fadi, Adam and Ramsey, if you're on, if you could just raise your hand, I saw them when you were going through, taking people out, but I can, I can start if you, if you want to put on the application. So to give you a little bit of background. So in two thousand sixteen, the commission passed a regulation that essentially limited second floors on Elm Street to fifteen percent. So you couldn't build anything over fifteen percent on a second floor on Elm Street. So we initially had to go to the variance board in New Canaan to get a, to vary that rule essentially, to get up to twenty percent. So what we're doing today is, it's kind of a two-step process, the variance board approved that particular variance, and now we have to come in front of this board, as far as the architectural review, you're kind of like an architectural review board here, as far as exterior space in the retail A-zone, okay? So this evening, what we're gonna do is just run through, I mean, so here's the first couple of slides, I know you have a long agenda, so I, I think we all know this spot. Essentially, there's the rear of the building. You can just keep moving through. That's the back part of the building, as we go up, just becomes important, because as you can see, and most of you I'm sure know, most of this, the buildings that sort of start from where the movie theater is, all the way up to the end where, you know, Brother and Higley used to be, those are all, second floors are, you know, almost over a hundred percent of the buildings all have a second floor, this particular building does not. This is the initial floor plan of the building, I'm just showing you, sort of, the entire building itself is roughly four thousand five hundred ninety-five square feet. Soleil space is about twenty-six thirty, and the new space, which is going to be a restaurant, is about nineteen sixty-five. If you can move through, please. So that's, if you look at B and C, that's what's there today. So it's about four hundred and sixty square feet of space, you essentially only access it from the rear of the property, and a majority of that space is actually a stairwell. There is a small office, a couple of small offices, a little storage area in there, if you looked off to the right, when you're going into the back of Soleil, but essentially it's really just a staircase, if you can go to the next page, please. So we can kind of move through these, all of you know this is sort of what it looks like in here. If you can just go through those, Lynn. There's just showing sort of the majority of it being a staircase. And then just keep moving on. So here's what we're essentially planning to do, so if you look at document in front of you, I'm just showing you sort of the ten percent that's there right now, and the additional ten percent that we requested the variance for. So it just breaks down essentially what's existing and what's proposed, and as I said, we're proposing another four hundred and sixty square feet of exterior space. If you can move through that, please Lynn. And here's, you know, existing and proposed. So if you, if you understand like the back, so the back of these particular building has sort of that rooftop there, and all we're doing is extending it. There's, as we go through this, you'll note this, as far as the site goes, you're not really gonna be able to see any of this from Elm Street. If you, unless you looked down that alley, we're on the right-hand side and you see the the movie theater, and how that's all second floor, until you, you can't even see this, really, when you look down, you can see just a little bit of it, it'll come out a little bit, and there's no windows facing the movie theater per se, but there are just gonna be skylights in there on the top, but I'll let Fadi go through the actual architecture plans. And maybe what I'll do now is ask Fadi Rascal to kind of go through these, because you'll probably have better questions for him than me. So if you wanna let him start, that would be great, he's worked with the Hospitality for quite some time, and he was instrumental in the variance application as well. Do you see him? Fadi, you on? You on?
There is. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. Basically, planning this addition, we kept in mind to minimize the visual impact on, on the total building as much as possible. But there are key things that we had to kind of follow as much as possible, we wanted to keep the existing roof line and have the addition match the existing roof line, so we don't go any higher. We needed to clear from the existing skylight on our roof, so, because it's kind of creating a natural limitation on how far we could go to the south side. Sorry, to the, to the west side. And we wanted to clear, keep passage to the rest of the roof, the remaining part of the roof, so after the addition, people can access the roof for one reason or another, given the landlords or anybody else. In order to put this addition, we have to step up from the main entrance of the back of the restaurant to twenty-nine inches. And because we want to keep the same roof line, we were forced a little bit to have our eve flare out from the actual addition, so we let that be, because we don't think it's, it's a problem, and we added to that some cobell brackets, just to make it more decorative, so when you are on the back side of the building and you get a glimpse of the addition, you basically see that a sliver of roof addition and the cobell brackets. And same on the side of Elm Street, the side that you could get a glimpse of that addition, basically this is what you see, and we, we hope that because of that, you see some articulation and interesting architectural detail. We added a skylight, we did not want to add windows to the addition on the roof, because we felt it would be not as visually pleasing, but yet we need some light into our addition, so we added skylight. And we chose to keep all the finishes that are existing and match them, rather than introduce new finishes. And the addition, as you see on exhibit six, which is what's displayed now, sheet, no, no, sorry, yeah, image number three. You could see that we added, moved on purpose about six inches outward in the east direction, just so we don't create a flat, long wall because of the addition. So it is straightforward, it's very minimal, the visual impact is as minimal as possible, and if you look on image four, this is, this is a worst-case scenario from Elm Street, the maximum you would see of the addition, so you barely see a little bit of the back high windows that are creating for the office, and you'll see the cobell brackets for the, for the new roof. As David said, from the back side, which is image one, you barely notice any addition whatsoever, no matter where you stand. So it is in general a very, very minimal, has a very minimal visual impact. But in addition to that, our addition is serving our neighbors to the east and to the west by blocking a lot of mechanical equipment of ours and of our neighbors, so both neighbors would profit in a way that they'll be seeing a nice new addition on the roof rather than mechanical equipment. And we feel that this is, if anything, this adds a little bit to, to the neighbors, to us, rather than, than introduce something unpleasant to them. But this is probably basically it, in a nutshell, if you have any questions, but you know.
Fadi, do you want to talk a little bit about the materials on twenty-one? I mean, I know they're self-explanatory, but.
We're keeping the stucco, yeah, the, the existing roof structure has stucco on the walls, we're matching that stucco. There is an existing roof naturally, and the newer roof would match the same finish to it. We're adding skylights, which, which are somewhat generic skylight, nothing too fancy, and then the cobell brackets would be painted most likely white or something similar, maybe slightly off of the actual stucco that is on the, on the wall of the building. But we, we decided not to try to make anything out of this little addition, it's relatively small, so we want it to be as somewhat concealed, you know, not, we don't want to introduce any, anything new to the neighbors or anybody else, so it would kind of blend in the existing.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions now.
Pardon me?
If there's any questions for any of the architects.
Um, I do, will you be doing anything to the roof structure, existing roof structure, to support?
Oh yeah, absolutely, I mean, we already have a structural engineer engaged to go to look at what's existing, but that would be phase two, as you know, and definitely we would have to do that, but until the structural engineer looks and examines everything, we wouldn't know exactly how much changes we would be doing. Excuse me, one second, I just have to. Sorry for that.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question, Kent Turner, on the Elm Street elevation. We lose our architect?
No, he's back.
Was there any thought given to enhance the design so that this building isn't so schizophrenic? It's, right now, it's a painted brick gray, and then it suddenly turns into brick. It's not comfortable in its sitting, sighting, and did you think about trying to enhance this and to tie it in, so it looks more like one structure?
Well, the east, the east corner, which is the newer restaurant that we would be, our clients would be moving in to put the newer restaurant, we haven't tackled yet any design matter, because he hasn't signed the lease or anything, we're waiting for this whole process to go through. But once we get to that point, naturally, we're going to propose what we're doing to it from the outside, and we're, we will have to present that to you as well, but we will keep that in mind. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but we will take that comment in consideration.
My other question.
I don't see us making major changes to the Soleil side, which is existing, because it's a, it's an existing restaurant, and we, we want to be very careful at how much we, we introduce new changes, but we could make the adjacent store or restaurant, the future restaurant, somewhat more cohesive with the building and more, more harmonious.
Okay, my next question is, did you do a shadow study to determine if you're gonna be casting a new shadow on the neighboring property?
I, we did not do specifically, we could do that, but I, I, from my quick experience doing that, we, we, any shadow that's being cast is, is not coming close to the property in a way that it affects, but if that's necessary, we could do that, for sure.
Is the property, is it residential, is there any units, or is it all retail?
No, it's all retail, we, I think, the building itself is, it would be two restaurants at the bottom, and upstairs is the entrance to Soleil, and it would be an office and the storage that we're planning to, to add to it.
So there's no visual impact, there's no windows that have to be closed up, or any kind of changes made or impact to the neighbor?
No. No, as I said, the impact is positive in a way, because we are kind of concealing a lot of mechanical equipment to both, to both neighbors, and it's gonna be much pleasant for them to look out the window after we put the addition.
Yeah, I would just say, if you, if you actually look down that alleyway, if you look sort of, if you're looking at the the playhouse to your right, and then the left is this reserved spot, it's just all like wall. Like even the second floor playhouse is nothing, it's just all brick, so you're not really casting any shadows on anybody, I should have taken a picture of that, I didn't, I meant to do that. But that would have probably answered your question.
That's all, thanks.
Lynn, if you could just, I'm sorry, is there any more?
One more question, you're gonna be locating storage, liquor storage, walk-in cooler, office, all of that program on the second floor. Yeah, there's gonna be a dumbwaiter installed between the two levels?
No, we don't see it as necessary at this point. We, we have not had a chance to discuss it, it didn't come up, because I don't feel it's necessary.
Okay.
By all means, I mean, as I said, we, we will be moving into phase two, where the restaurant, the newer restaurant would be planned adequately, and if something like this comes up, definitely we'll address it, but as of now, we, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Thank you. Okay, if you could just move through quickly, I'm just, as far as neighboring properties go, Lynn, if you can just move through the sort of, pick from page twenty-five on of the presentation. So as you can just see by this diagram, this is just the point I was trying to make before, if you look at the buildings that go up and down the street, ninety-five Elm, one eleven Elm, one twenty-five Elm, sixty-three Park, all of their second floors are, you know, twenty-nine percent to a hundred and thirty-five percent, so it's not as if this particular, we're only asking for twenty percent in the end, so I think it fits in fine with the neighborhood, if you keep going up, through Lynn. And this is just sort of looking down towards the bookstore. Other, keep going, this is from the corner all the way up, you see the second floors are sort of all buoying out. And this is just the rear, the rear of it. And then if you just go to the end, Lynn, I think everyone knows this. We went to the chamber, the chamber gave us the support, there should be a letter in the file, as far as their support for both the Hospitality and this particular application, and then just to confirm, yes, we're using this space on the second floor for food storage, refrigeration, and office management, which I neglected to say in the beginning. And if there's nothing else, it's our presentation.
So, Rucci, the question I have is, is this is basically a site plan, as you, you said, for the design review guidelines?
Yes.
So your architect mentioned coming back, but.
That would be for the front. If we have to do, yeah, if we were gonna change something for the front, if we were gonna repaint the brick or something of that nature, we would have to come back again, this is just for the second floor.
Yeah. We'll be separate application.
Right, any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, thank you, Mr. Rucci.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this is regular meeting, so do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr., please, Mr. Chris.
The design seems to be in keeping with the current building. Seems to be a very gentle impact, it will be wanting some screening or maybe less appealing mechanicals that are on the roof. And I, I think the materials seem to be very decent quality, I, seems to be a very neutral type of development that will have a fairly minimal visual and other impact on the town.
Okay, great, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion of the motion? I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Claire Tescornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Super, carries unanimously, we'll now go into public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Give us a second.
Mr. Engel. Okay, item number two ninety-five Country Club Road, upon application, Stephen Finn, Wobzy, Rosen, Queston, authorized agent for Country Club of New Canaan, owners for special permit approval and site plan approval of sections three, four, C, A two B, to allow construction of additional platform tennis court with lights to the north of the adjacent to the existing courts in the four-acre zone at ninety-five Country Club Road, Mr. Finn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, excuse me, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Recuse yourself, okay, super. Ms. Nielsen is recused, and Mr. Bash, you are seated for Ms. Nielsen. Please proceed, Mr. Finn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, commissioners, for the record, my name is Steve Finn, I'm here representing the Country Club of New Canaan. With me here tonight are Mr. Brian Otero, a member of the Board of Governors of the Country Club, Tom Nelson of McCord Engineering, the engineer for this project, and Chris Kasaragi, owner and member of Riley Green Mountain Platform Tennis, who would be the contractor for this court. As many of you probably recall, we were last before you for special permit and site plan approval in two thousand eighteen for a substantial renovation and expansion of the clubhouse and relocation of the pool and the construction of a new pool house at the Country Club. That project came out beautifully and has enhanced the Country Club of New Canaan's desirability as a country club and as a host for private and charitable events. Membership at the Country Club is now full, and there's a substantial waiting list. Ninety-nine percent of the membership reside in New Canaan. The Country Club of New Canaan also continues to be an extremely popular venue to host events for many New Canaan charities and clubs, among those are the New Canaan Community Foundation, the New Canaan Charity League, the Nature Center, the New Canaan Library, A Better Chance Get About, and many others. The increase in membership at the Country Club in the last few years, when combined with COVID, has led to a substantial need for a new platform tennis court at the Country Club. Currently, there are four lit platform courts, and as our application statement makes clear, there is substantial need for a fifth court, I'm not gonna go into what I've already put in the special permit statement. The proposed location for the new court is located to the north and immediately adjacent to the two most westerly existing courts. Lynn, if you could put up on the screen, exhibit S E one, dated seven twenty-five twenty-two. Now, for time purposes, Mr. Chairman, I can continue if you like.
Please do, please do.
The new court will be at the same level as the existing courts with a deck and walkway that connects it to the existing courts. The lights proposed for the new court will be at the same height as the lights on the existing court. As Chris Kasaragi from Riley Platform Tennis can explain in more detail, if any commissioner desires, the lights on the new court will have less spill than the lights on the existing courts because of the way they are constructed. Lynn, I see you have that up, if you could move that, I think, yep, and then up a little bit. Yes, there you go, sorry Lynn, a little lower again. Yes, so there you see in the gray block, the proposed location for the new court, if you look carefully, I think you can see the four existing courts, two are directly below the gray court, well, almost directly below, they're a little bit off, off-center, but in a way, that's better, because that moves the court further away from Indian Rock Road. And as you can see, Country Club Road would be to the south there, which is directly down. And that court, the new court is further away from Country Club Road from all the existing courts. The other two courts are to the right, you probably can see those. And Lynn, if you could just go down a little bit further, you see that big building there, that's the squash building, that's quite high. And that significantly obscures those two westerly courts and the new third, the new fifth court location. The lights for the new court will be full cutoff and get to zero-foot candles well before the property line. We provided a photometric study confirming the limited light spill, which I hope the commissioners had a chance to take a look at. We have that available, if anyone, to be seen tonight, if anyone wants to take a look at that. As I mentioned, the new court will be located further away from Country Club Road and Indian Rock Road, further away from neighbors, and more to the interior of the Country Club than the existing courts. In addition, as I mentioned, the location of the new court is behind the squash building, which largely obscures the court and will block the ability to see light bouncing off the surface of the court, I know sometimes light bounce is a concern to the commission, this will not be seen easily at all, there's the, one of the light studies that we submitted. For the record, Kathleen Holland of Inland Wetlands indicated there are no inland wetland issues for this project. Jen Elson of the Health Department has signed off on the project. As of yesterday, town engineer Maria Coplet issued an email stating that the drainage letter and the revised plans are consistent with the town of New Canaan drainage policy, and she has no further comment. Tom Nelson, the project engineer who's here tonight, can answer any questions you might have. I want to talk a little bit about the lighting of the court, and but Mr. Kasaragi can provide more details if necessary. First, the industry standard for platform tennis courts is to have the lights mounted twenty feet above the playing surface. Riley Green Mountain Platform Tennis has about eighty to ninety percent of the market share in Fairfield County. And Mr. Kasaragi believes a hundred percent of the market in New Canaan. The courts in New Canaan include the ones at the New Canaan Field Club, Waviney, Country Club of New Canaan, and a half dozen private courts. Mr. Kasaragi informs me that all the lights on these courts are located twenty feet above the court's surface. There was a mention in Lynn's memo about a variance back in two thousand, none of these, the lights for the course I just mentioned received variances other than back in two thousand for the Country Club of New Canaan Courts. Importantly, since that that variance was obtained, this commission passed section six point one one of your regulations, which specifically regulates outdoor lighting and allows outdoor lights to be thirty feet high. The new court will easily comply with this requirement. So, um, again, in the interest of trying to be efficient, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I could go into more detail about the lighting, but unless the commissioners have concerns about it or their questions, um, I can turn it over for questions or.
Let's, yeah, let's, um, let's jump into questions and then if we need your experts, we can bring them up, please, Mr. Finn. So commissioners' questions?
Art Cassavant, uh, Mr. Finn, have there been any concerns from budding neighbors?
Uh, not that I am aware of at all. We sent out letters, obviously. The one letter I got was a, a question about notice, but no objection to the court.
Thank you.
Kent Turner, um, do, do you have a site plan drawing that shows the, uh, adjacent residences? So we get, we can have a better idea of how far away they are. And also as far as a topography, are the houses that are close by, are they lower than the light, the top of the light fixture?
We do have a, uh, an updated survey by RKW that was submitted. I'm not sure it shows elevations, Mr. Turner.
I mean, you know, it's really hard to understand the impact on the lighting without knowing how it impacts the neighbors.
Well, I, I, I think the answer to that is, is that since this court is has better lights, less bounce, more blocked by the squash building, further away from the neighbors that, and of course, they all got notice. Uh, no one seems to have any concerns about the lighting and, and, and if they were complaining about the existing lighting, perhaps, perhaps your concern would, would merit, uh, some additional attention, but we've had no complaints about the lighting of these courts. And this court, as I mentioned, is further, slightly further interior to the club and certainly further away from the neighbors than the existing courts.
James Bash, um, is any of the new, the proposed newly installed lighting going to be directed, um, anywhere outside of the playing surface area?
No.
No, sir.
But, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, Dick Ward. It's probably not a question, uh, that you can answer, Mr. Finn, maybe one of your colleagues can. If it would, was dark out and the other four courts, the existing courts had their lights on, as I assume can take place. And then you add the fifth, the new court with its lights. What, what overall effect would there be? If, if any, or are the lights on the new court would just sort of blend and? I don't know, is?
Uh, Chris Kevry from Riley.
Sir, kindly step to the podium, please.
Um, I'm Chris Kazuragi from Riley Green Mountains Platform Tennis. So the, uh, the existing lights now are LED five thousand Kelvin. And the new lights are going to be, uh, five thousand Kelvin LED as well. So they're going to be the same color, temperature. Um, and, uh, a little less bright than the existing. So they will blend in and, um, other than the ambient increase of that fifth court, you won't really notice any discernible difference.
But the cutoff angle of the new lights compared to the old same or better?
Uh, so better. These, the existing lights are, uh, a wide beam fixture that's shining as straight down as possible. The new fixtures are complete cutoff ninety degree. Uh, and they're also angled so that they keep, uh, like directionally on the court itself with, uh, as little spill as possible.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Engel.
I've been studying the drainage. Is there anybody here who can talk about where all, all these HDP drains that are underneath twelve inch HDP drains? I just remember the water level getting rather low in that pond and that pond irrigates the whole country code. So it's more a question of curiosity I have whether all this runoff, which is being redesigned according to these plans flows into that pond or does it just flow into the storm drains? Where does it go? Cause I see somewhere being abandoned and the, the drainage is redesigned.
I'm going to ask Mr. Nelson to address that question.
Good evening, Tom Nelson, professional engineer with McCord Engineering. So yeah, the, the drainage patterns from this paddle court and all the adjacent courts are, are totally separate from the pond network on the, at the Country Club of New Canaan. So this runoff actually joins, uh, a, a pretty intricate stormwater management system that was done back in two thousand and eleven as part of that parking lot expansion as well as the squash court expansion. So there is a, a large network of, uh, underground piping that brings everything to a very large rain garden, water quality basin, uh, to the west of the, uh, on the opposite side of the driveway to the west of those courts. So all that water is captured, um, the runoff from that parking lot, those courts, the squash buildings, the paddle hut, it's all captured. Uh, conveyed via that existing stormwater system to that, uh, that existing rain garden. That spills over to an existing wetlands area. Um, we did inspect that. That's all in good working order. Uh, that existing twelve inch pipe that you mentioned, that was simply, um, uh, some, some of the drainage that exists that kind of conveys from the, uh, eastern side of those paddle courts down to that storm drainage network. Uh, we just felt like it wasn't a great idea to keep that existing twelve inch drain underneath the new structure. So we rerouted it to an existing catch basin in the parking lot. At the end of the day, it's going to the exact same place. So we haven't changed that drainage pattern at all. And just to add to, we are proposing four inches of gravel below, uh, this new, uh, paddle, uh, um, paddle court deck. So that water that goes through the court deck surface will, will have an opportunity to infiltrate into that gravel. And we've also included a couple of, uh, of, uh, perpendicular, um, infiltration trenches to again, kind of, uh, encourage infiltration. We feel that the, the runoff post paddle court will pretty much be the exact same as what's there now. No change in the drainage patterns. It's, uh, we're going to infiltrate as much as we can and, and anything that's not infiltrated will be captured by that existing system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? Okay, Mr. Finn, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, super. Let's open this up to the public. Would anyone starting in the room? Would anyone in the room like to address this application? Okay, Lynn, let's check Zoom land, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this application? If you do, please raise your hand. It does not appear that anyone wants to speak.
Super commissioners, are you comfortable with me closing this application? Okay, super. This application's closed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, item number three, three eighty-eight Spring Water Lane upon application Stephen Jones, Hatley Homes Design Authorized Agent for Kurt and Erica Vazoski owners for special permit approval of section three, four, C, two, and six, four, G to allow illuminated outdoor recreation facility. That does not create a hazard or nuisance upon a, a adjacent properties, pull and tennis court review of excavation or grading or soil disturbance of thousand cubic yards of earth and ten thousand square feet or more of soil disturbance, two acre zone at three eighty-eight Spring Water Lane. Who's here to present, please?
Hi, I'm Stephen Jones, the principal of Hatley Homes Design. And, uh, I'm the project leader on this, on this program. And, uh, tonight I've brought with me our civil engineer, Jim Kassudis, our builder, uh, John Runney, and we have the homeowners Kurt and Erica Vazoski. We're here tonight, uh, because of three things that trigger the special permit with P and Z. Uh, one is the disturbance and regrading of the property, AKA the civil engineering. The second is the pool illumination. And the third is the tennis court elimination. And with item three, the tennis court elimination, we had a couple of neighbors object or have concerns. And the client has decided to take that out of the program. So that is no longer on the table. Um, we're going to eliminate the tennis court illumination. Even though we did the, the legwork for all the lights and everything, but, um, they would rather have happy neighbors, um, and just drop it. And we would like to push forward with the pool illumination and the, uh, regrading and disturbance to the property. So those are the only two issues left on, on the agenda as of tonight. We have spent the last few months since March, um, working with various, uh, professionals and review, um, departments. We have, uh, formal approvals from health, wetlands and engineering at all the levels for this project. Um, and we have reviewed it, uh, preliminary plans with P and Z. And so we've been doing this for about four months and we know, we think we have, have it exactly where we need it. Uh, so I, I really want to cover the pool elimination. And then we have Jim Kassudis who can talk to you more about the disturbance and the regrading to the property. Um, we did, and I apologize, we did bring boards. And we're not used to, uh, the way this digital meeting is run. We're used to bringing boards and even with digital being able to zoom in and, and use our boards. So we do have boards at the back of the room that illustrate where we're at. Um, and we can show those to anyone here after the meeting. And that does include a landscape plan that is in the works that we have an updated landscape plan that dovetails with the civil engineering, uh, environmental requirements of the property. And, uh, most of these, um, landscape plans that we do are always a work in progress that they morph as the project learning increases or changes. And, uh, what we would do is welcome neighbor input on and review these with the neighbors. So, you know, we don't want this to be an adversarial relationship and we welcome any neighbor participation. On the pool illumination, it's a standard pool design with sidewall lights. Let's see, Erica, could you bring me that board that is beside you and I can just show the group here, what we have? You may be familiar with Pete Pinto. He's a known, uh, well, designer in, in this area. And he has done a digital, um, layout of, of the pool. And this is what it looks like in the daytime. This is what it looks like, like at night. So those are only sidewall lights. There is no additional lighting. So the pool will glow at night. But it's not, shouldn't disturb the neighbors. I should also mention that the property is surrounded by trees on three sides and part of the landscape plan has already been implemented. And that is that they've planted, uh, green giant arbor vitae all the way around three sides of the property. And there is forest to the left and the right. So the neighbors within probably two or three years will not be able to see any of the buildings or structures on the property on those three sides. Only those down at road level looking up would ever be able to see the, the house and, and the pool or the tennis courts. So that's, that's where we're at. We're at with, you know, this landscape plan does address both aesthetic and environmental needs. Um, and as we said, neighbors are welcome to get involved. And, uh, so I think the, the other issue other than the pool and illumination really is the degree of disturbance and, uh, et cetera, to the property. And Jim Kassudis could speak to that. And I believe that we're basically recycling the soil on the property. The house is being built where the plateau already is on the property from the former residents. So we're taking advantage of that and, uh, but there is extensive sewage and drainage that has to be accommodated. And that, you know, triggered the degree of disturbance that we're doing and regrading. So, um, I think what I, I would do is take any questions from the audience and anyone online.
You won't be taking questions from the audience. You'll be taking questions from us. Why, why don't we hear briefly from Mr. Kassudis?
Yeah.
Sir, if you can, um, just give us a quick overview and then the commissioners can ask both of you any questions. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Jim Kassidis with Kassidis Engineering, professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I know you have a heavy agenda tonight, so, uh, we'll be very brief. Um, Mr. Jones covered most of it. It's a new residence with, um, a driveway that uses the existing, um, entrance. There is a proposed pool patio in a pool cabana that is, uh, attached to the residence, but not, not quite. So when it came to health approvals, we had the health department approve the septic system as well as the state department issue their own approval because there's two units, two structures, uh, connected to one, um, septic system. So to move on into drainage, we utilized the property to the best that we could by spreading out the drainage structures throughout the property. We have three drainage structures, two to the north, one by the driveway courtyard. Uh, all those three, yes, all those three will collect the water from the tennis court, uh, the residence and the driveway and one lower closer to the street that will collect the, um, the footing drain discharge if there's any water coming out of the footing drain. Um, the, the grades meet current rules and regulations as they stand. Um, we propose silk fence, mud tracking pads, stockpile areas as far as erosion control is concerned. Is concerned, and as Mr. Jones also mentioned, the perimeter trees are um, uh, basically intact, the mature trees. So with that, I would answer any questions, uh, you may have.
Thanks. Messengers, questions for the team?
It's Commissioner Chris. Still would like to see some type of, uh, landscape plan opposed to one that morphs over time. Um, just wondering exactly what we're thinking of since the, some of the plants you've already put in are, uh, not native such as the green giant with people like rose fast and gride scream.
Yes.
Local to our area.
There was a comment from, um, Kathleen Holland, the conservation director, when we obtained her, uh, approval and sign off that a planting plan is to be shared with her as part of the application permitting process. Um, because her main concern was the runoff to the wetlands that are not on the property, but just to the north and south. Um, we've agreed to disturb as little as possible to the north of the driveway to maintain natural cover. Um, there is a planting, but it's not a complete planting plan because um, the cons, the concern right now is to stabilize grounds as they, as they flow from west to east and towards the road. So that was the focus of yeah, if you, if you may, you may share it, but the focus, uh, for right now is to stabilize the front yard of the house, basically. Cause that is where most of the erosion may take place. So on the planting plan that we'll share with you focuses in that area.
So I understand you, sir. Um, the planting plan has a couple, um, a bit of a linear programming issue. You're trying to cover everything to once. Screening words in your mouth for, um, either being resident or the, uh, property owner or your neighbors. All right. There is a runoff issue you want to deal with. To, uh, try to, you know, soak up water.
Yes.
Um, and also, um, visually you want something that sort of looks nice, I guess. But, um, the, um, kind of conservation development and, um, some rules also suggest strongly that, um, native plants that are palpable wildlife be used. So this would also be a consideration that might be useful to, at the moment.
It looks like a lot of the plants.
Understood.
We've just got this now.
I, I, and I, and I do, I understand that.
Oh. Red bud, stretch burn, yeah, sits for, uh, little head, significant growth. Least, um, I wish for the bearing.
I'd give a chance to look this. Yeah, let's give Mr. Chris a chance to review the plan. Are there other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, we're in the back there, the sports court. Is that a tennis court or a sports court?
Uh, the dimensions of it is for a full tennis court.
And how far is that from the property line to the rear of the property?
That is very close to the setback line, but.
Yeah, so it, it's about thirty-two feet from the property line.
And how close is that to the nearest neighbor?
Uh, nearest neighbor is probably about fifty to sixty feet beyond that property line.
And is there any landscaping back there now?
There's forest in between the two properties that's on the neighbor's side. So there's a. It's a set of woods, basically trees. Between the two properties.
Well, I'm familiar with this property and I know that a lot of trees came down.
Right.
So I think a lot of sightlines are there now that weren't there previously. Do you have any plans to like block that from the back of the property?
Yes, if if there are any sites viewing lines that are left open, they will be planted. Right now, they do have that green giant row that comes down where the trees are missing. So there are conifers in that area. Between the two properties. And if they're insufficient to block the view, then they probably will add. Some extra screening there.
And then for the lighting for the pool, would that be on every night?
Uh, might be on, you know, periodically in the in the summer. I think the homeowners could probably answer that, but. You know, most of the year you're not going to see lighting there. It's and it has a safety cover. So at night. When it's not being used, the safety cover would be in place and you won't see the lights.
Thank you.
But the the lights are just the lights inside the pool.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. Let's open this up to the public. Would anyone in the room like to address this application? Yes, ma'am. Finally, come to the podium, give us your name and address and your comments, please. That where the gentleman was.
Hi, I'm Jessica Peterson. I'm a neighbor at sixty three Adams Lane. So we border the property. Wanted to say first of all, thank you for working with us and understanding our concerns about the illuminated tennis court. That would have been shining like right on our kids' bedrooms. So really appreciate that. As for the landscaping, my concern is that that was a two point seven acre property. And I know that these people who who are now developing the property did not. Take down all those trees, but every single tree on that property was taken down, every single one. It was like the Lorax movie, like completely decimated. So I know that they put some smaller trees in at the border. But you can still see completely the entire property. So what is there today? Won't be sufficient in terms of protecting the line of sight, as Claire had said, into the property. You will definitely be able to see. So I'm fine with, you know, the court being there and everything else, even though it's very close to my property line. But I would like some plans to see how that's going to be protected in terms of visuals, because there was a lot of tree coverage there before and now there's none. So that is the only concern that I wanted to state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room like to address this application? Yes, sir.
Hey, everybody. My name's Lars Anderson. I'm from, I live at three fifty one Springwater Lane. I'm learning a lot tonight. I haven't, I haven't attended a lot of these meetings. And when you guys were talking about drainage. Something just came to mind that I wanted to get some clarification or find out if it was even going to be an issue. Is that there's a stream adjacent to, it's a seasonal. Brook adjacent to the property between. Your guys' property and and the Shattans on Adams Lane. And that extends across Springwater over into our land. And I was just wondering with drainage, if there were going to be any. You know, if that was going to be used for drainage or if they're banning that versus fact, the runoff or anything like that.
Good.
That's my question.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
If you care to address that, feel free.
Jim Kassidis again. Associated with that water course is a wetlands delineation area. So we are not allowed to encroach within that, but. Just the simple answer is we're not allowed to increase runoff from our property to adjacent properties if that's it. Water course, wetlands, other neighbors. So. The quick answer is, no, we will not increase runoff to the stream. Anything that. Used to flow that way will continue to flow in the same pattern. We will maintain historic flow patterns on the property.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room like to address the application? Lynn, let's check Zoom land, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this application? If you do, could you just raise your icon hand, please?
Mr. Jones, while we're doing this, just to be clear, chances are. If the commission chooses to approve this application, chances are they will make a specific condition. On the approval that there is not illuminated lighting for the tennis or sports court.
Okay, yes, yes. And you're welcome to add that, you know, we would review the. Site plan, the landscaping plan with the neighbors as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Lynn, anybody out there? Okay, commissioners, we've got usual choice in this type of situation. Choice number one is we. If you feel you want to see a landscape plan, we continue this and see the landscape plan next month. Or choice number two is we close the application. And potentially, if you see fit, you can condition that a landscape plan be submitted to the planner. What's your, what's your druthers?
The latter.
Yeah.
Mr. Engel?
I think that given that we've only gotten this detail at the meeting. As Mr. Chris pointed out, and that the the major question, I won't say objection, but major question. From the Western neighbor is one of screening. I think I'd like to know that the neighbors have had an opportunity to have that conversation with the with the architect. On exactly what they're going to plant and we can get some more specificity on that. So I'd like to. Not vote on this until they come back with a specific plan.
You don't want to leave it up to the planner?
No, I would like, no.
Okay.
Agreed. I agree as well.
Okay, so we've got people on both sides of the trade, so to speak. When we have people on both sides of the trade, we continue. So, sir, I think what I'm hearing commissioners, tell me if I'm getting this right, is what we would like to see for next month. Which is August twenty third, two thousand twenty two is a. More complete landscaping plan and ideally have also been reviewed with the neighbors. Commissioners, is that correct?
Chairman, I would also suggest it should be reviewed with inland wetlands since the applicant mentioned that. Issues of. Water runoff and how the landscaping can affect that to deal with neighboring wetlands. So.
Yeah.
Be.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, you're already talking to Ms. Holland, aren't you?
Yes, we were deeply involved with wetlands and environmental impact in the engineer.
Okay.
Involved in this. And this first round of. Plans, you know, is. In concert with that. The missing pieces, comments from the neighbors. I guess we're not used to. I think the neighbors in most respects would probably be more on the aesthetic side. I don't know that, you know, most neighbors would. Understand, you know, all the dynamics of the. Wetlands and drainage and the. That went.
Well, I think the the issue at this point is, since you are talking to Ms. Holland, you're you're addressing the wetlands issues. I think the issue there is more screening. Okay.
Yeah, I think two neighbors of, you know, all the neighbors did raise the issue about. The question about the landscaping. I don't know that they had taken any issue with it, but.
Okay. Welcome back to us next month. And what I would suggest in the interim you do is you review your plans with the planner. And she can give you guidance. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Understood.
Okay, this is continued. August twenty third, two thousand twenty two, item number four thirty six. Parting Brook Road upon application David Rucci Lampert, Rucci LLC Authorized Agent for Daniel and Leah Kittredge. Owners for special permanent site plan approval, section three seventy and eight two B to allow building coverage of five thousand six hundred and seventy one square feet, little five thousand two hundred and thirty square feet, increase of four hundred and forty one square feet. Allowed under three seventy by restricting twice square footage or eight hundred and eighty two square feet in the two acre zone at thirty nine Parting Brook Road, Mr. Rucci.
Hi, good evening again, David Rucci, Lampert, Rucci in New Canaan. Today I'm here representing Daniel and Lee Kittredge, thirty six Parting Brook Road. With me on Zoom land is going to be John Everett from New England Design. He's the architect, engineer Tom Quinn. And unfortunately, landscape architect could not be here, Karen Hughes, but I think that I have enough information to answer. Some of the commission questions when we get to the landscape plan. So if you could punch up the. Application, Lynn, that would be great. I'm sorry, Tom Quinn and John Everett, New England Design. His phone number, if that's what you need, is last four digits are four, three, five, seven. So this evening, we're. I'm not sure how many applications you've seen with this. I don't know that many of them. It's three point seven E. And essentially what this regulation allows you to do is to get additional coverage for bill, I'm sorry, to. Encumber second floors of buildings in order to get additional coverage. I think we had one on Canoe Hill a while back that actually we were involved in. But essentially what we're doing today is the applicant is exceeding coverage. It would like to exceed coverage with this vis a vis the special permit. By four hundred and forty one square feet and doing so, they have to. Encumber twice the amount or eight hundred and eighty two square feet on the property, essentially meaning that you can't build a second floor over eighteen feet. Store and a half or eighteen feet. In this particular case, we're actually encumbering about nine hundred and forty nine square feet. Those will be deed restricted and meaning that you can never build over that particular. Level vis a vis with this special permit unless you take out the. Extra covers that you've asked for. So this is thirty six Parting, Parting Brook. And you can see. This is from across the street. So you're looking at a. Fairly limited landscape in the front of the property, but to the rear and to the sides, it's actually heavily dense woods. Can you go to the second slide, please? Thanks. So this is just the existing survey showing the property. You'll note that there's wetlands in the back. It's pretty flat other than that as far as the property goes. You can go to the next slide, please. Here's a Google map overview of the property. Once again, you can see it's very heavily wooded. I'm not sure how many of you were able to get up there. But the site is heavily wooded. You can see that the closest. The closest house to the actual pool is about a hundred and eighty seven feet. And on the other side, it's about two hundred and eighty feet to the others, to the other neighbor. The other parts of the property, that's all Wilton. If you look off to the east. That's going to be Wilton. If you can move to the next slide, please. Through that, thank you. So here's your proposed survey. We can just go to the next one. So I think it's going to be easier to show. We're proposing a. A cabana and a garage, basically two accessory structures on the property. And I just give you for frame of reference. So you have it in your notes, what the actual regulation says. And how it worked. And essentially what this is saying is that the. All the buildings as far as coverage goes. And you can, you can obtain additional coverage by limiting any and all the buildings. And the reason I'm sort of. Emphasizing that and I'll get into a little bit later is some of the. Questions slash concerns of the town planner, but I'll get to that towards the end of this. If you can move to the next one, please. So here's what we were talking about a little bit before. This is what we're looking to do. The. allowable coverage on the property is five thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. We have existing coverage of four two six oh. This proposed garage, this proposed pool house, additional ninety two and four twenty nine together, giving you essentially five thousand six hundred and seventy one square feet. Showing, this just shows you the doubling of that and then what we're actually. Going to restrict. Next slide, please. The red in or pink in your. Pamphlets and on the screen right now, those are the areas that we're restricting height. To eighteen feet. And just to be clear, so an accessory structure in this zone is allowed to go to thirty feet. It's a store and a half, but is allowed to go to thirty feet. So we are restricting as per the reg to eighteen feet. This is the two acre zone. Next slide, please. This is just a. Easier floor plan for you to see where those particular areas happen to be. If you can move to the next one, please. Overview of the site with the pool on the property. Once again, the pink is earmarking or dedicate the. The area that's being restricted. Next paragraph, please. I'm sorry, next page, please. So this is the site where the proposed garage is going to go. If you go to the next slide again. And it was chosen because we're obviously want to use the same driveway. So the accessory garage is coming through. There's less site disturbance put into this particular. Area of the property and it will sit almost straight in front of you. There's three car garage there now. This will be an additional garage bay. Next paragraph, I'm next slide, please. Once again, this is where the sort of cross sections of the garage and what's being limited. And once again, you can see that a portion of this property is higher than the eighteen feet that we're restricting as allowable. Under the two acre zone. Next slide, please. This is just a loft area. It's showing next slide. This is the pros pool cabana. It's kind of the best way to look at it. It's essentially going in this. Area almost where sort of the brown grass is in the back. But it'll sit behind the house. It's not in the front yard. Next paragraph. This is the design. I was going to have John Everett kind of run through the design. Of this particular, of the particular house. I'm sorry, of the accessory units. Can you see if John's available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you? Put the slides back up? Do you mind if we go back to slide number two? So just once that slides up, just. Quickly. Taking a look at the, the existing house as viewed from the street is back, yeah. Yep, both, both the accessory garage and pool house. You know, they're, they've been designed to complement the existing house by using similar forms and materials, particularly the gable roofs. Siding and pretty much all the detailing is intended to to complement what's there and be contextually appropriate. And again, if you look at this picture, the garage is to the left. Kind of where the basketball hoop is. And then the. Pool house is sort of behind the right side of the building. So both accessory structures. Are located behind the existing building. And as David was mentioning, they are buffered. On three sides by trees and then partially by the house on the front. So now if we can go back down to. Where we were here. Going back to the, to the garage elevations. Yep, this one right here. Yep, back up one. There we go. So again, if you look at the garage here. The existing house has clapboard siding. Has combination of shingle and metal roofing. And again, as you see here on the garage, if you look at the top. Which is sort of the the street facing elevation. Again, we've got the metal roof canopy at the front door. We've picked up on the sort of arch detailing, the crown moldings. So pretty much picking up on all the detailing that's on the house. With this garage structure, light even even down to the lighting fixtures will match what is on the existing house. Same with the garage doors will match the existing garage doors. Man doors, everything else will match, even the coloration. Is what you saw in that original picture of the the front elevation of the house. And then if we scroll down a little bit further. To slide twenty, I believe. One more. So again, here's, here's the the elevations of the pool house. And just to note, you know, we're the the coverage of the pool. That we're counting for the pool house, four hundred and twenty nine square feet. That's the area. Sort of shaded in pink, the two covered porches which extend ten feet are not included in that coverage calculation. I know that was a. Question in the discussion. And but again, if you look at this, the design of the pool house is small structure, again, picking up on the. Again, picking up on the, the standing C metal roof that's used on the house. And then playing off of that arch form that you see on the front facade of the principal house. Here at both of the, the two porches and even the outdoor chimney and fireplace matches the stone on the existing building. So again, trying to make everything tie in together here on the site. And that's about it for the design of the buildings.
Lynn, if you could, I have Tom Quinn on if. Is Tom on? You can go to the. Okay, Tom, do you want to discuss briefly the site plan, which is?
Yeah, no problem. So for the record, my name is Tom Quinn. I'm a peak engineer, licensed professional engineer. The kitchen is asked me to take a look about a year ago at these proposed improvements, just to see how they would. Be incorporated into the property and how the town's policies would. Have to be addressed in order to meet these proposed improvements. So we began talking about this a while ago. And basically what we did is. This project was constructed first in 2017, part of the current drainage policy, as you all know. Back in 2017, we did get a wetland permit. Not sure if you would have mentioned that. So we also applied for a wetland permit this go around for these additions. The proposed additions will increase the site's impervious area. So in order to meet the town's drainage policies, we did. Do a drainage study for the two, five, 10 and 25 year storm as required by the town. And what we're doing is we're going to slightly modify the existing systems. Because of the increased impervious area, we're going to be adding some galleries and some units. And luckily for this property, a lot of the underlying soils are bank ground sand and gravel. So we don't have any problem with that. So if. I guess I'm not sharing my screen, but. Right behind the pool cabana, there are about eight cult tech units there. We're going to be modifying. Excuse me, there's five there today and we're going to be adding a cult tech units there. And then for the proposed garage, there is, we're going to be adding 24 linear feet of four by four gallery there. And these systems says, as we do, we connect the roof drains to a sediment trap first and the sediment trap will be. Overflow into these units. Therefore, we have an easy place for maintenance. So. This strange report and the calculations in the plan were submitted to town engineer back in May. The town engineer, all I received was an email from Maria Copeland, as you know. You know, and it simply said that the town. Requests that the existing systems be examined and cleaned as needed and incorporated into the drainage narrative, drainage report narrative. The overall concept of the expanding, the existing system, it's consistent with our policy. And as you're using updated rainfall amounts, we have no objections to the drainage analysis. So. I would kind of state that she's approved the plan pending the inspections and any maintenance that's required of the existing systems. This plan sets the buildings as, as you could see from those pictures that were shared. Sets the buildings and the pool pretty much on existing grade. So there's very little earthwork filling, I should say, that needs to occur on this property. Therefore, just about every excavation that occurs, the material will be removed from the property. So we don't have to worry about. Accumulation of soil from excavation and also that will cut down on sediment transport and the like. And also the existing grades that you see out there are going to be pretty much what they are when we're done. For instance, the proposed pool has a coping elevation of. 399 and the existing grade that goes right underneath that pool is 398.5. So there's very middle little earthwork that has to be done other than the excavation. Like I said, that material is going to be removed from the property. All the pipes that were approved by the wetland agent back in 2017, we're going to be using those pipes. The same location, the same pipes as our outlet structures. So just to reiterate, we have a wetland permit for this, this project. And also I would say that we have a well under health, excuse me, engineering approval pending the inspection. And we do have health department approval, as a matter of fact, for the. What's called the central subject system to tie the pool cabana into the existing system. So we have those approvals from those three departments. That's it for me. Unless you have any questions.
Kent Turner, I have a question. Has the, have the codes changed since 2018? And how good or how long is the permit valid for?
The well and permits are good for five years. So the, the original well and permit was for construction of the house. That was in two. I think we were granted that in 2016 and the house was constructed in 2017. So in. Exact date, but we submitted, I believe in April for a wetland permit for the. The improvements that you see on this plan. As a matter of fact, there's very little disturbance with these improvements within the upwind reviewer. I think it's only about 2,500 square feet of disturbance. And really, the disturbance is for the installation of the drainage system. So the well and permit is good for five years.
So if I do the math right, it seems like we're pretty close to five years, right?
No, no, we, we submitted a brand new permit this past April. So we have a new.
Second permit.
A second permit. Yeah. So it's. The original permit to construct the house was closed out when we got the CO for the house.
So James Bash, so how, how were the different areas that were selected to be deed restricted? By, by what basis were those disparate areas throughout the property selected?
So mostly based on the fact that those, that was the new constructed area that we were using. We weren't going to go and. We couldn't really deed restrict the house that exists today. So. The way to look at it, I think, is twofold. You're allowed to. Increase coverage and restrict area, right? So we could have taken these two buildings. We could have added them to the building. We didn't have to make them accessory structures per se, but it would seem that to have sort of a, a larger free flowing. Houses with deed restricted areas, be it a pool, house and garage. You know, is almost more massing than having separate structures. And that was the way we sort of looked at it. So to the town planner's point where she's like, well, you know, you're really, maybe you're not using the rule right because you're just restricting something that's already being restricted. But I don't really agree with that, just in the fact that we could have just added them to the house and restricted those areas. Regardless. And plus the reg doesn't set out and say, you can't use an accessory structure. And I think that. I remember some of those hearings when they were talking about adding this. I can't tell you exactly what the rationales were for all of it. But in the end, it was really to create lower spaces, you know, lower, lower second floors.
Mr. Rucci. Don't you think, as I recall. It was to create lower heights. In the house. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what it was at first. I know they were talking a lot at that time about in-law suites and having first floor livable units, you know.
The idea was it's a trade, right?
Right, but.
We're, we're going to give you more coverage in return for not having as high a house.
Right, but I, and I understand that, but all I'm saying, my, my only point is that we could have added these to the house and still gotten and still have the same. Had the same application, right? I mean, we could have easily added this garage. As a, as a structure to the house that we have today, lowered it. And there's no difference in what we're requesting, whether it's a separate structure or not. I mean. I think that if that was really the issue. They would have, the commission would have said, well, you can't use it on a separate structure. And also it's in the zone. I mean, everything's capped at height, right? Whether it's your own building. I mean, there's certain things mostly in the commercial zones, but right, you can get extra coverage. Or extra height for this or so everything has a height cap, no matter what, whether it's an accessory structure or whether it's a, a principal building. So I don't, I don't think that, or I would propose to this, but if that was what they were really trying to stop, then they should change the rule. But I don't think the rule today says that. And may I also say that, you know. This was also spoken, not with the current town planner, but this was a project that was done and spoken with Ben when he was still there.
Right. If I may interject, David, I, a little over a year ago, I spoke with Ben Winter extensively about the best approach for. Going about this and we looked at various options and this was what collectively we felt made the most sense and was. You know, in keeping with the intent of, of exception 3.78. So.
So my concern. And it wasn't on the commission, obviously, when that reg was being drawn up. Is that if the house sells at some point in the future, a future homeowner is not likely to. I think you go into some of the esoteric, esoteric details of a property such that they would. Know without doing a heck of a lot of research that there are three disparate and small restricted areas. Of this parcel that I just bought that I can't put in addition on, or I can't create higher than 18 feet. And I just, I don't like the lack of transparency or the requirement that a future owner would have to dig that much. Rather than just this being one area, this as opposed to multiple areas that reg does refer to in area. Right. Someone could interpret an area as an accumulation of three disparate areas or just one area. But I, I just, this, this is this, you know, three red restricted areas throughout the property. Including, you know, one portion of the main building, which is just a part of a screen and porch, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, from that concern though, all this, any homeowner who's going to purchase this particular piece of property. They will run a title search and there's a deed restriction on the title search. So this particular. Application, this will be on the title search. Some will have to say you have three pieces of your property that are deed restricted. So it's not as though they wouldn't know. They may not want to buy the house because of that. That's, that's a different issue. I mean, that's why you have a title search. There's title contingencies in every purchased real estate. So if they didn't like that as a homeowner. Then they wouldn't have to buy the property per se. And it should also be disclosed in their property disclosure forms when they're selling the house that they have a deed restriction on the property. Not unlike you have a deed restriction for a conservation easement, or you have a, you have a shared driveway. Or, you know, all those things that could affect a particular piece of property. And I mean, I guess there would be other ways we could do this. I mean, we could add it to the house. We could keep it down. I mean, we've actually given a little bit more than we, than we needed to. In this particular case, there may be ways to revise things. This was sort of from an architectural perspective. The way it's going to look the nicest on the lot. I mean, for lack of better words. Anybody else? Questions?
I just have a question. It's Kent Turner. I noticed there's no perspective of the overall site, the buildings. You know, the design is, is very handsome on the proposed additions. But I don't see anything that really gives me a better understanding of what this. Addition, all these additions are going to look like on this site.
Do you mean from an overall?
Kind of is a question for Lynn. You know, our requirements for drawings are to be submitted are very clear. And I don't see any perspectives. I only see it for the existing, not proposed.
Well, the proposed architectural plan should show, if you go to page.
But it doesn't give me any, any sense of the context of the entire site, you know, the impact that all this has on that site.
What about the Google map overview? That shows the two, the two shows the spot on there.
Not, not in three dimensions.
So what, I mean. I'm happy to go back and, and get you and, you know, and, and help you understand what you're looking for. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, these are generally the plans that we put on. File, but I, but I don't disagree. I mean, if you don't understand them, I'm not trying to tell you that you should. I mean, you definitely are.
I think there's a, a trend happening through past applications. That the drawings are not complete, that are required for us to review and to understand exactly what we're trying to.
I mean, I, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, this is.
Then can we mute whoever that is, please?
Yeah, this is John Everett again. Are you looking for sort of a three dimensional rendering of the entire property?
Yes.
Okay. That's something we can produce.
And I, and I, again, I bring this up. I, I think you've done an excellent job of depicting the buildings. It's, you know, it's a very handsome design, but I think it's important that we understand the entire context of the site. And Lynn, I ask you to, you know, we, when we review these documents. Are we going through our checklist and are these applications complete?
Okay, anybody else?
Other questions?
Mr. Angle? So I want to call, I, I think the crux of the whole argument is. In the planner's memo. So I'd like to actually read the planner's memo and have a, which has a question at the end, which I don't think we've answered, asked. But it says the applicant is proposing to restrict accessory structures that are already restricted in height. And you're saying that, and she goes on to say, this would be contrary to the intent of the special permit in section 3.7.0. And you're saying, you don't know what our intent was, but this is in keeping with the letter. Of the regulation that we didn't specify our intent. We said. Any structures, but she goes on to say accessory structures in all zoning districts are restricted to one and a half stories. The applicant should clarify if the proposal is to restrict the accessory structures. You did parts, only portions of the accessory structures. And then she asks the question, the narrative seems to indicate that a porch or port porches are being proposed to be deed restricted. Doesn't the porches already potentially get the benefit of having a portion? Or all of it not count toward coverage? This should be clarified by the applicant. Are your porches already excluded from coverage?
Right. Just like any other building is excluded from coverage. Like we're just, we're going through coverage, right? So we have a, we have rules on what coverage happened to be. So we have accessory structures, they count towards coverage. We have a principal building, it counts towards coverage. You don't count overhangs for your gutters either towards coverage. You don't count portions of your porch as coverage. I can only look at the baseline of coverage. I can't mix and matches to what can and cannot. Be counted. That doesn't count towards coverage.
You think the intent of the regulation was to include exempted structures?
That's not an exempted structure. I disagree, I disagree with the premise. I disagree with the entire, I disagree with her premise. We can only look at coverage the way you look at coverage. We can't pick and choose what we want to do. This is the way, just like accessory buildings are counted towards coverage. Just like a.
It's a very clever argument and I actually have to agree with you that the writing of the regulation. Is probably not clear as to our intent. If that's what we intended, you're right. We should have said so.
Right. And, and honestly.
What you're telling us.
Yeah, but and, but that was, I didn't look at this like, oh my gosh, look, we can get away with this. I mean, I didn't. I read the reg and says that you can do it this way. And we talked about winter. He said, you can do it this way. So it wasn't as if we, that's why we, I mean. I think one thing that this commission. One thing that we should all understand is to come in front of this commission takes a ton of time, a ton of work, a ton of architectural plans, landscape plans, engineering plans. It costs a ton of money. And so it's not like we want to do this. Like, hey, let's just go try to get away with this. I mean, we try to get as much information as we can ahead of time before we come in front of you. And it's a problem. I mean, it costs a lot of money to get here. So we're not doing it to try to get away with things. I mean, we look at the regulation. We say this is what we think it's worth. I mean, this is what we think it says. We get, we got at this particular time, it was with Ben winner. It wasn't with Lynn. I don't, I mean, the fact that she's questioning it is fine, but I don't think that that's what the reg says. And I wouldn't help the client to go bring, spend all this money if I think there's an issue. I just wouldn't.
May, may I interject here? This is John Everett again. I think, I think David alluded to this earlier is that. If we were to take that garage and attach it to the left side of the building and take the pool house and attach it to. The right side of the building as you face it from the street. In, in that sense, we'd, we'd be complying with what you're suggesting is the intent. And we've been creating really a massive structure. That still had the exact same coverage as what we're proposing with the two detached accessory structures. So the way we looked at this was more from overall aesthetics and site massing and sort of from a master planning standpoint on the site. I think, I think from, you know, from just driving down the street. By setting the two accessory structures to the back, we're trying to lessen the impact on the site and on the neighbors. So I, I think that's a lot of what played into our decisions. So.
I think this is Dan Radman. I, I think we're getting lost in the weeds here and what. And we've looked, I would look to Lynn to confirm my understanding of this. Her comment at the end about the porches is the fact that porches are not considered building coverage. The porches is the fact that porches are not considered building coverage, period. And that your deed restriction allotment is including the porch.
No, it's, it's not.
According to your plan, it is.
No, if, if, can we go back to the presentation quickly?
That was my question. So the, the right side of the primary residence that. You know, three bays or the four bays of a enclosed porch, that's not a porch.
Now, if we, uh, if we look at, um, yeah, this.
Proposed deed restricted screen porch.
Oh, I thought, well, screen, it's an enclosed porch to the way the regulation written for porches, it has to be open.
Okay, so does that screened porch count towards coverage?
Yes, I thought you were talking about the porches on the poolhouse, I'm sorry, so.
Then Lynn, correct me if I'm misunderstanding your comment in the memo, but. So if it's an enclosed porch, it counts towards coverage, or it can be deed restricted.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it this one?
Yes.
I misunderstood your question.
That one?
Yes, I misunderstood your question.
Am I correct? Yes, okay. So basically, we're deed restricting. What you're proposing to deed restrict our structures and are counting towards coverage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I just had a quick question on the landscaping.
Yeah, I was gonna do the landscaping.
Sorry, I know we didn't quite get there.
No, it's fine.
So I mean, as you pointed out at the beginning, it's a little light on landscaping from the front, which is fine. It does look like you guys are adding some landscaping around the, the pool, at least from what would be visible from the street. But I noticed doesn't really look like there's any landscaping being added around the garage area.
Right, so if you, yeah, so we decided right now, most of the landscaping that was needed on this project was for the pool. Because it's really trying to protect the front of the property, both from the neighbors and from the pool itself. But on the sides, there's really just a lot of screening already. And if you look back to, um. I think Lynn, it's page, uh, it's towards the back here, so page thirty one. Sort of will look, I'm sorry, slide number thirty one will look sort of across to the side where the. Where the garage is going to sit. And then also you can see the rear line is on page twenty nine. I'm trying to find, there's another good picture. I guess if fifteen. Also sort of shows the, the screen that exists. And then if you look at the overall picture, Ms. Nielsen on. Page five, you can see that where that garage is proposed. I mean, there's a lot of woods in between the nearest house, about two hundred and eighty feet away from there.
Yeah, I'm more meant from the road, but I mean, it is an attractive garage, so maybe you have no desire to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, there's nothing proposed in front of the, the accessory structure, no.
Okay, Mr. Rucci, we all set? Out of your own?
Well, I said, I didn't know if there's going to be any more questions or any more con- concerns about materials that have been presented.
Any other questions?
Other than Mr. Turner? Just one question, have there been any concerns from budding neighbors?
Uh, I got a call from one neighbor who was on the Wilton side. I sent them all the plans. I did not hear back from them after that, and that was two months ago. Cause we were actually scheduled to first be on last month. So I never heard back from them that there were issues unless they're on Zoom or something. I didn't hear that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rucci. Let's open this up to the public when anyone in this room like to address this application. Seeing none, Lynn, let's check Zoom land, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this matter?
Kent, would you like to, uh, while we're waiting, continue this and then come back with a three dimensional rendering?
No, I don't, I don't think it's necessary for them to come back. Um, we could, maybe a condition.
Okay.
The planner would. Handle it.
Then nobody out there?
No one's there.
Okay, well, we have as a commissions on the grapple with Mr. Rucci, one comment I'll make is this is for a special permit. So, you know, there's, commission has latitude, you know that.
No, I, I understand, I, but I just, I just want to be clear that this is. The way we've read the regulation.
No, you're, you're clear.
Okay.
Okay, um. This hearing's closed. Item number five thirty nine Locust Avenue upon application, Michael Jones, authorized agent for FJL Holdings LLC. Owners for a special permit is section seven eight E one. To allow other antennas and existing structures, any other antenna which is not attached to a tower such as antenna mounted on a building water tank or other structure, not specifically constructed for the antenna. Installation of the business C zone at thirty nine Locust Avenue. Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Fisher, hi, good evening. And with me this evening is Mr. Jones, who's to my left.
Okay.
Hearing by, on behalf of the applicant dish, Chris Fisher from the firm of Cuddy and Fader, and also Michael Jones. Thank you for hearing us this evening. This is an application for a special permit to install wireless facility on the roof of thirty nine Locust Avenue. Thirty nine Locust Avenue already has facilities of T-Mobile and Verizon installed on the roof. Dish, by way of background, you probably know them as a satellite TV company. They're also a wireless company. The fourth national provider currently building out a wireless infrastructure network throughout the country. They're under some fairly aggressive timelines that are set by the FCC. And they just recently passed a milestone with twenty percent of the US population served. They're currently building out network in order to serve seventy percent of the population, which is part of their requirement by the June of next year. This particular site is intended to provide service in downtown New Canaan and the residential population in that particular area. It's the only site Dish has in its current network. Future phases obviously would involve other facilities. The company is very focused on co-location. This particular site, as you can see in the PowerPoint presentation. Is a three story office building. At the intersection of Locust Avenue and Forest Street, if you could go to the next slide in the roof plan. Dish proposes three antennas and ancillary equipment on the roof, generally in the northeast. Uh, section of the building facing west and then facing southeast. The southeast location, these are a little difficult, obviously, in the site plan to see. The southeast location will actually be an enclosed. Uh, screen area where the equipment would be installed, and I'll show you some photos to give you a sense of what the antennas will look like. The other two locations are just one antenna. Um, it looks like a little bit more, but that's just a ballast mount that's on the roof of the building. There'll be one antenna on a pipe mount. Uh, next slide. Sorry, that's actually the antenna model. It's a comscope antenna and to the left you can see a picture, which is just a typical. The installation on a rooftop. Next slide. The next slide is the equipment cabinet, a very small would be installed in the roof, and this would be in the area behind the screen enclosure in the southeast corner of the building. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the existing rooftop. Um, you can see some of the existing Verizon and T-Mobile antenna equipment. There are not locations available on the existing penthouse structure in order to be able to install dishes facilities. This is a little bit of part of why the installation is shown as it is in the site plan. In this picture, just to the right would be the area where you'd have a screen wall enclosure. And then the antenna would be mounted, very similar to what you see in the middle of the picture on the exterior facade of that. Uh, next picture. Uh, this is again is another angle of the rooftop. This is one of the, pointing to one of the locations where you'd have a pipe mount and an antenna. Uh, the antenna would be very similar in size and color to what you see mounted to the penthouse wall now. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is existing conditions. Dishes installation would be to left in the photo. It would actually be smaller than what you see, uh, right there with the ballast mount of the other carrier. The other carrier has a number of pieces of equipment and an antenna located. All these would be located on the roof itself. Our next picture. Uh, this is an angle, um, back to that area where I mentioned with the screen wall, which would be, um, this is facing back north, but the southeast side of the building. We can certainly answer questions, uh, just a couple of quick comments. Um, we are here for a special permit under your regulations. This also qualifies as what's called an eligible facility request under federal regulations. That essentially is encouraging, if not requiring co-location on rooftops as part of the zoning process. Um, so if we can answer questions, um, that you or the public may have.
Is there, this is Dan Radman, is there any legacy equipment that's going to be removed from the roof as part of this installation?
Uh, not as part of this, this is a new dish only installation. The other carriers would, um, be proposing any changes. And I believe you have an application coming up on, on another application by Verizon for some changes.
Everybody good? Okay, thank you, sir. Would anybody from the public like to address this application? Lynn, take a quick look at Zoom land, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to address this application?
Okay, thank you, sir. This hearing's closed. Thank you. Okay, fifty one Main Street, item seven, eight, nine, which will be heard together. Item number seven, fifty one Main Street, upon application, Ryan Hoiler, Hankley Allen, authorized agent, fifty one Main Street LLC. Owners for a zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteen, two thousand and seven, revised December seventeen, two thousand and twenty one. They had a new section, five point one one, housing redevelopment zone, HRZ, to accommodate eight thirty G set aside development of twenty. Unit multi-family development located at fifty one Main Street in the B residence zone. And locate in the historic district. Item number eight, fifty one Main Street, upon application, Ryan Hoiler, Hankley Allen, authorized agent, fifty one Main Street LLC. Owners for petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently located in the B's residence zone. And located in a historic district, the request to change is designate the property located at fifty one Main Street as HRZ Housing Development Zone. And item number nine, fifty one Main Street, upon application, Ryan Hoiler, Hankley Allen, authorized agent, fifty one Main Street LLC, as owners for an eight thirty G. Set aside site plan application for the property located fifty one Main Street to be residence zone and located in the historic district. As I said at the beginning of the evening, um, tonight, we will listen to the applicant's presentation. We will give the commissioners and any of the, the advisors to the commission the opportunity to speak to the applicant. And then, uh, we will then continue it probably to the August twenty third meeting, in which we will then take public input. Our advisors tonight to the commissioner are present. Is Andrew Kingsbury, Life Safety and Fire Operations, Sean Thompson, Traffic Engineer, Albie Basset, and New Canaan Fire Chief, I understand is on Zoom. Paul Payne, New Canaan Fire Marshal, Maria Copla, Town Engineer. And, um. Where's yours, Mr. Hollister?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, uh. Ms. Brooks Ivney, do you have our slides? Thank you. If you could put the first one up. While we're looking for that, I'll introduce the, uh, team that is with me. Our architect is Chris Hall. CAH Architecture in Easton, Connecticut. Our consulting engineer is Lundy Andrea. RVDI in Greenwich, traffic engineer Kevin Soli from, uh, Soli Engineering, Monroe, Connecticut. And our landscape architect and lighting designer is Mary Blackburn from Soli Engineering. Uh, as always, thank you to town staff for, uh, helping us with logistics. Just a note on procedural compliance, the, uh, proposed zoning regulation and rezoning map. Filed with the town clerk on July thirteenth, notices published in the Advocate, July sixteenth to twenty first. Uh, rezoning mailing accomplished on July fourteenth and filed with staff on July nineteenth. The good news is this is a much simpler application than Weed Street, so our presentation will be, I believe, correspondingly short. Certainly less than sixty minutes, maybe less than forty five. And, um, I'll start with an overview of the property and, uh, Lynn, if you could go to slide number three. Thank you. Property is a point three eight acres in the B residence zone, uh, on Main Street. Adjacent to the town hall. It's not often I get to stand at the podium and the property is directly behind me, but it is directly behind me. We could look out the window. The existing, uh, use, uh, structure is twenty six hundred square feet, originally built in eighteen eighty one and eighteen eighty nine. As a rectory for church, used, uh, from nineteen twenty three until, I believe, twenty seventeen as. The, by the Red Cross and is known locally as the Red Cross Building. Uh, purchased by, uh, our client, uh, uh, in twenty seventeen. And presently, the building is not used. Uh, the parking lot is used by, uh, the town human, uh, Health and Human Services, uh, Department. Uh, as we, uh, did at, uh, seven fifty one Weed Street, it's a three part application, a regulation amendment, which we have called. A housing redevelopment zone. And rezoning of the property to the, uh, new zone and then site plan approval. And as you know, all three applications are proposed, uh, under section eight thirty G. I'm just going to note for the record, the, the reasonable changes provision. Uh, of eight thirty G, and I say that because we do now have. Comment memos from the town engineer, from Mr. Thompson, Mr. Kingsbury, and, uh, the town planner. And I, apparently, Attorney Geldman and I have a disagreement, but my view is that the reasonable changes provision means that. What the town staff, uh, and peer reviewers, uh, don't have the right to just criticize. They have an, uh, they have an obligation to point out where changes could be made in the site plan that would address. Uh, concerns that they have identified. The process to date, uh, there are no wetlands on the site, no, there's no aquifer, no public water supply watershed. Uh, the WPCA sewer application will be filed at the end of this month before their. WPCA's next, um, upcoming deadline. Uh, on Lake Weed Street, we do not need to install anything new, uh, in the public street. Uh, we've checked the natural diversity database. There's no endangered species. And, uh, the historic district, uh, commission, we obviously have to. Uh, file for a certificate of appropriateness that the plan is to, uh, do that after we are perhaps maybe not totally through. But certainly through the first part of this, um, uh, zoning process. And I say that for two reasons. Number one is the law. Allows us to obtain the permits in whatever order we think is most logical. But I would note that, for example, in Mr. Kingsbury's, uh, peer review memo already filed. He's asked for changes in the building height and the shape of the building, so we don't want to go to historic district commission with. The, uh, shape of the building still in flux, so we want to get through this process and, and see what we come out with, whether we make. Uh, building changes before we engage, uh, with the historic district commission. Just before I turn it over to Mr. Hall, I, I will say two things. This, um. The core of this application is that, in our view, it preserves, uh, an historic structure and. It proposes, uh, rental units, including lower cost rental units in the downtown location. And frankly, in most places, that would be considered a win-win type of application, and we hope it will be viewed in that way. And, and second, as I said, this is a simply a much simpler application than the, uh, seven fifty one Weed Street. So, uh, the order of speakers is Mr. Hall, Mr. DeAndrea, uh, Mr. Soli, and then Ms. Blackburn. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hall.
Uh, good evening. I'm Christopher Hall with CAH Architecture and Design. Uh, wanted to, uh, speak a little bit about the design of this project and I wanted to also note. We do have experience in this zone, having been the architect for the four main, this old house, house, uh, which is, you know, close to across the street from this. Uh, also, we've, you know, performed numerous, uh, projects on. Uh, buildings of this vintage and older, uh, both reuse and, you know, additions, uh, changes. This, uh, the whole idea of this is to preserve as much as possible of this existing building. Uh, which you can, you know, see in the renderings is the front and most foremost, uh, component of this. Um, if you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. The, uh, added part on the back, uh, reflects, uh, the materiality of the front building. And also is set back from it, uh, to respect the existing structure. The proposed building here is four stories above a parking structure and is being proposed at fifty six point eight percent coverage. The, uh, overall style is complementary to the existing building. And we incorporated the, uh, you know, shingles, uh, to match the existing building. Also have the, uh, third and fourth residential story built into the roof to minimize the. Overall, uh, appearance of the scale of the structure and also. overall uh, appearance of the scale of the structure and also broke it down accordingly for the same purpose. If you could go to the next slide, that would be great. This is the existing structure here. Uh, we are proposing uh, to rehabilitate the existing materials. And we will be retaining seventy percent of this existing building. The parts that we will be removing are on the back. There was a porch that at some point in time was converted to storage space. And there was a, it what appears to be an addition of a kitchen on the back, which will be coming off. The remainder of the building will be uh, pushed forward on the site, but retained uh, you know, in a, in a restored condition. Uh, likewise, we will, we'll restore that front porch and, and any of the components that have degraded over time. You know, whether we can restore the materials or, you know, replace them with uh, like materials if they're past the point of, of being uh, being salvaged. Uh, if you move to the next one, that would be great. Another uh, view there from the, the street front showing the, you know, main building is still retained there and will be the, the primary focus. Uh, other things of note is that, you know, we will have uh, compliance with uh, uh, accessibility. We'll have elevators that provide access to all the floors. The units will all be type B units, so they will be able to be converted for people who uh, do have mobility issues. Uh, there'll be common facilities up on the roof, a roof deck there that has elevator access everyone can get to. The first floor of the existing structure will be converted into a fitness center. Uh, which will also have uh, accessible components to it. Uh, the second story will become one of the residential units. And uh, you know, it, it is uh, our opinion that this building can be built within the Connecticut fire codes and building codes. And uh, that, I will turn it over to Len DeAndrea. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Leonard DeAndrea, Connecticut Professional Engineer. In our firm provided surveying engineering services for the applicant. Uh, slide number thirteen, Len, if you may. The slide coming up will be existing conditions. There you go. And uh, basically, this site consists of the uh, historic building that was mentioned, uh, detached garage behind that a relatively large parking area, surface parking area, uh, that's in the back in the driveway, uh, extending out to Main Street. Uh, the building is sewed and uh, it does have its uh, typical water and electric services. Going on to slide fourteen, please. So the proposed um extension uh, of, of this development is to take the existing dwelling, lift it, bring it forward, put it on a new foundation system, and then build the uh, multifamily building behind it. It'll then have uh, parking for the most part underneath the building. And the um, parking will be served by a center aisle in between the two bays. The driveway, excuse me, driveway entrance will be located in the same location, which is in the uh, northeast corner of the site. Uh, it will actually decrease the exposed surface parking while it increases the building coverage. And altogether have an increase of about forty-four hundred uh, square feet in a previous coverage. So of course, for drainage, uh, we did our soil test pits. And um, we then designed an infiltration system consisting of dry wells. And that will capture the driveway runoff and the roof runoff. And again, on this uh, particular development, we only really need one catch basin. That catch basin will be equipped with a deep sump and a, and a trap for debris. And then there'll be a level, level spreader to um to spread and dissipate in the excess runoff and uh, there'll also be landscaping around those uh, green areas around the perimeter. It will again be served by the electric, which is right out in front of the property, perhaps a new transformer located in the northeast corner, and there will be water service. It is currently sewed and because of the age of the building, we assume the age of the lateral and the need and desire by the town of New Canaan and, and most municipalities to eliminate infiltration um, uh, or excuse me, infiltration of groundwater as much as possible. Um, the existing lateral will be replaced with a new plastic type joint pipe, uh, all in accordance with the DPW requirements. And the um in- increase in discharge from the project will be about four thousand six hundred and fifty gallons per day of effluent. Uh, the development um is, is small in nature and, and from what we have seen so far, uh, we don't see any problems with the um existing sewer mains out in front of the street accepting this. But I'll get that in a second. There have been some DPW comments which will further prove that it is the case. Uh, we did receive comments from the DPW today. We will be looking at all those. We will be uh, addressing each and every one of them. And one of them, again, much like a previous project that's been before you, is to do some video inspection and cleaning and to do some monitoring. And I'm sure we're going to be very agreeable to that, because we want to demonstrate that your infrastructure can accept this development. Uh, we have like any other project, taken this uh, in, in, in a fashion where we are concerned that we will not adversely impact uh, drainage patterns and life and uh, life and safety issues. And we believe we have done that uh, to date with this submission. But again, uh, as we get into DPW comments, I'm sure this doc, design may be tweaked here and there the further that I run. Uh, that's uh, all I have for you tonight, unless you have any direct questions, you can turn it on to the next speaker. Why don't we keep going and then um, I'll have the commissioners ask questions to the team.
Uh, thank you, Lenny. Uh, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I also hold the designation as a professional traffic operations engineer, um, which, I done, which uh, recognizes uh, expertise to traffic engineering. Um, so uh, we looked at the proposed development and as, as been mentioned, we're talking about um, the redevelopment of the site to develop uh, twenty new uh, multi-family housing units. So as part of our analysis, the first thing we want to do is understand existing conditions. Um, the site driveway and access is a little bit unique as it does have a uh, current, the site's currently improved with the twelve-foot driveway um, with access to Main Street, which is essentially uh, intertwined with the signalized intersection of Main Street Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. Um, uh, you know, as part of our analysis, the first thing we did is we looked at the uh, traffic signal plan um, as uh, administered and managed by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Um, we looked at uh, accident data for the last three years, available data from the CT DOT Crash Data Repository, which identified only um, two accidents in this area, so it was not recognized as a high uh, accident area or uh, any potential safety concerns. Um, we also installed automatic traffic uh, uh, traffic recorders out here to determine um, what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is to evaluate um, required site distance. And the uh, eighty-fifth percentile speed as reported was approximately twenty-five to twenty-six miles per hour, which is consistent with the posted speed limits through the area. So, um, and there is available site distance coming out of the driveway of uh, two hundred and seventy-six feet looking left and two hundred and eighty-seven feet looking right, which is um, in accordance with what's required for um, the uh, observed speed. Um, so we conducted new traffic counts in September of two thousand and twenty-one to determine how the existing signal operates. We then went and looked at our proposed development. Um, uh, development of this size is um, very uh, nominal in its traffic generation. Um, for the twenty units, it would generate a total of four new trips in the morning peak period, so one entering and three leaving. That's one trip every essentially twenty minutes, leaving the driveway. Um, during the afternoon peak period, um, it's six total trips, so three entering and three leaving the driveway. And again, that's essentially one car coming in and out every twenty minutes. Um, as part of our review and, and wanting to understand how the Department of Transportation would look at a project like this, as it is somewhat intertwined with their existing signalized intersection, we did reach out to them. Um, uh, it last August and September. We spoke to both engineers from the district office and also engineers from the Division of Traffic Engineering in Newington, who manages and maintains all of their traffic signal operations. They reviewed the project, they reviewed the nominal trip generation, and they actually gave us the direction that they would not uh, require um, this leg or this driveway to be incorporated into the signal operations. And they recommended that we simply maintain the existing operations. We are proposing to widen the existing driveway to accommodate, to better accommodate um, ingress and egress uh, trips out of the, out of the project, out of the development. Um, and they simply uh, encouraged us to simply pursue that through a minor driveway modification through the encroachment permit process. Um, so uh, in conclusion, even with our new analysis and the nominal trip generation, the existing signalized intersection maintains acceptable levels of service without any degradation. Um, and our uh, stop sign controlled approach uh, operates with acceptable levels of service. So in um, in my professional opinion, this development would not have any adverse impact on traffic operations and would not propose, propose any um, uh, safety issues. The, you know, project of this size just doesn't generate substantial or sufficient enough traffic to really cause any problems with uh, with the, with the existing operations or the proposed operations. And I think with that, I pass it on to Mary Blackburn to talk about uh, landscape and lighting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Blackburn, a professional landscape architect in the state of Connecticut uh, with Soli Engineering Offices in Monroe, Connecticut. So I will walk you through the landscape plan we have developed for the project, for the development. Um, along Main Street, um, we provided an evergreen and native ornamental grasses and flowering shrubs along the foundation. There will be a proposed transformer and the evergreens that we're proposing to screen that would get out about uh, six to eight feet tall uh, to provide adequate screening. As we move along the east side of the property, uh, between the parking and the neighboring property, we have proposed uh, evergreen um native inkberry shrubs mixed in with flowering dogwood shrubs. And then further like towards the back of the property, there is a um, a proposed retaining wall. And there's limited space between that retaining wall and the proposed parking, so we are um, proposing a evergreen ground cover in that area. Towards the back of the property, we have a, we have existing trees that are being ma- maintained. And we're proposing lawn area. We wanted some lawn area just to kind of give the eye um, like a rest from all of the planting and, but we also proposed um, some screen uh, shrubs in that area as well. We will be removing two um, existing trees in the front of the property. Um, just that are being impacted by the site work and then three in the center portion of the property. There is an existing um, overstory deciduous tree border on the west side and on the east side of the property. And there's also some evergreens mixed in fact. Um, we're proposing um like a riverstone ground cover on the west side between the building and the neighboring property, mainly because that's going to be fairly shaded. Um, and there's a drainage um, swell in that area, so the um evergreen or the um riverstone ground cover um, would be the best material for that area. Um, keep going to the next slide. For the lighting plan, um, I'll start in the front on the existing porch area there. We have a recessed um, fixture. All, I should mention to all the lighting is dark sky compliant and LED. And then on the east side of the property, we have a mix of wall packs and recessed fixtures in the um kind of on the underside of the um balconies there. And that provides lighting for the parking. And then on the rear side of the building, um, we've done the same treatment with wall packs and then recessed lighting under the balcony. And we've kept uh, you can see the two lines there. The outermost is the line of zero point zero foot candles and then the inner more line is point two foot candles. So at the property line, you know, we've aimed to keep it at point two foot candles. Could you go to the next slide? Here, we've just provided images of the light fixtures. Um, the one, the two on the top there are the recessed fixtures that you wouldn't see. Um, they'd be under the, the balconies and um, and the ceiling of the porch. And then the lower fixture are the wall packs. Um, it's not, you know, meant to be noticeable. You're more um, it just provides like a wall wash type of light, as you can see on the building. And with that, I will um, be there for any questions.
The record Tim Hollister, and I will finish up our presentation with a couple of points about the first, the proposed residential program, uh, twenty total units, the mix being nine one bedroom and eleven two bedrooms. So out of that total, there will be uh, six units that will be uh, rent restricted in accordance with eight thirty G's uh, formula. Square footage is one bedroom, seven hundred and thirty-nine to nine hundred and thirty-four square feet, two bedroom, uh, one thousand eleven to sixteen seventy-two. Um, as we did with Weed Street, where there is an affordability plan, which has what we call Schedule B, which specifies the required amenities, finishes and quality uh, of not just the uh, affordable rent restricted units, but all the units, because all the units will be uh, identical. Now, there's um, this is a little bit complicated, but there's a, a very important thing about the uh, aspect of the affordable units that I want to point out to you. The uh, expected market rate rents, that is fourteen of the twenty total units uh, is actually the same re, same range as we have predicted for Weed Street, which is twenty-five hundred up to perhaps six thousand dollars a month of the, for the largest market rate unit. If you happen to look through the uh, affordability plan that was filed with our May twenty-fourth application uh, for this property, you would have seen that the uh, that by, based on using twenty twenty-two data from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, the um, maximum incomes uh, and the uh, maximum affordable rents are substantially different, higher than the, what we presented for Weed Street, based on the application that we filed in January of this year. And I just wanted you to understand the reason for that. The statewide median income, just with the note, we get the numbers on median income in the month of April every year, went up from a hundred and three thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's in one year. The, the people who, like me, who work in the affordable housing space, so to speak, but trying to figure out where that came from and the conventional wisdom, which we're getting from some of the economists at the National Association of Home Builders, is that the infusion nationally of pandemic money over the past two years has brought the median income in the lower fifty percent of the country and also in Connecticut. So it very, somewhat uh, anomalous and unprecedented in my experience. The median income has risen substantially, almost seven or eight percent because of a rise in the lower fifty percent of incomes. Now, the, the oh, or I should say, the, the end story of that is, of course, the pandemic stimulus has ended, so we actually expect that this increase that we saw twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two will actually dissipate in the next two years. And the reason I point that out is I, I, the numbers in the, based on the twenty twenty-two area medians are somewhat eye-popping. We actually expect them to go back to twenty twenty or even twenty nineteen levels in the next two or three years. So I just didn't want those numbers to be uh, misunderstood. Um, as, as was the case with uh, with Weed Street, our uh, our affordable housing plan contains an affirmative fair housing marketing plan uh, which uh, has been elevated by the legislature into a legal requirement uh, for all rental housing. Uh, the applicant is required to market units across the region to minorities and groups that are quote, least likely to apply. And uh, as I explained when we were here for Weed Street, And as I explained when we were here for Weed Street, that is why this application has afforded the protections of the federal and state fair housing acts. We believe, of course, that this is an appropriate location for multifamily residential is it's proximity to the railroad station, served by public sewer and water, proximity to public parks. Area, there are multi-family, multiple multifamily buildings in the area, including the forty-seven Main Street and condos along Seminary Street and the Cobbler's Green Development. We've included in our, our submission to you a supplemental package that was filed last week, that includes the slides that Mr. Poland presented on June twenty-second. Even though that was oriented toward the Weed Street development, many of the points that he made, we believe are applicable here, which is that multifamily and single family are compatible uses and, and not, not antithetical and not inconsistent. This is again, a site-specific regulation. Justifications for that are that there is no existing regulation that contains or even approximate the combination of use and dimensional rules and affordability rules that we need for this redevelopment. It is, of course, within your purview to consider the applicability to other parcels, but we have made it site-specific. The courts have told us that spot zoning to facilitate eight thirty G development is, with a site-specific regulation is not a legal concern. And we believe that a specific regulation helps with enforcement, a clear statement of what is allowed and not allowed. And finally, of course, as I said last time, we've used this process in about sixty towns over thirty years and it's worked very well. As an aside, I'll address Commissioner Nielsen. I do have your memo, very thoughtful memo that you sent to the town planner about the, discussing issues with site-specific regulations. And that will make that part of our response when we come back at the end of August. We have given you a separate package detailing affordable housing need in the town of New Canaan. I think the, sort of the main things that out of seventy-five hundred housing units, there are only, as of twenty-twenty-one, nineteen rental assistant units, rental assistance units, five CHFA mortgages and twenty-one deed restricted units. Your two point nine one overall percentage is basically under the assisted housing category, but, which I guess is Millport and Canyon Parish. But in the other categories, the town is lagging behind, I will say, the rest of the state. And I think that's, I, I did mention, we have four now, four comment memos, which we will respond to when we continue and we, we will have interaction with the peer reviewers and try to mold our responses to their comments. So that's our presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your patience in listening to us and we're here for your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hollister, commissioners as well as advisors. Questions for the applicant and team?
Chairman, I have a question or two if I may. Looking at the plans, it looks like the idea or is, the plan is to cut off about a third of the back of the house. Eliminate it and then move it essentially by cannibalizing the front, most, much of the front lawn. Is that correct, sir?
You won't get me to agree with, with the word cannibalizing, but yes, we're moving the building.
How structurally sound is the building? Is it movable?
All right, Chris, you want, how structurally sound is?
Yes, I, it does appear that the building is structurally sound and capable of being moved. We would prior to any moving reinforce that structure and have a professional moving company, you know, do the lifting and moving to make sure it, it does stay in place. But the structure itself is not disintegrating at this point. It's, it's more finishes and, and exterior materials.
The statement was, it does appear that doesn't sound like there's been a test at all that this is a structurally sound structure that can be moved.
Well, the building inside is, has finishes on it. So it hasn't been, you know, stripped down or anything like that. You can see from the basement that, you know, it doesn't appear to have, you know, significant damage or anything that would be a concern for moving it. So we, you know, we have confidence that it can be achieved.
Of the about seventy percent of the building that you're intending to keep, what's happens to the interior rooms and walls?
It's
gets kept, what gets?
Only the shell really gets kept. The, the interior gets reconfigured.
So it's a facadeism type of approach you're taking?
Essentially, yes. I mean, this, this building has been used for commercial purposes for a hundred years already. So it's, it's not a a house that's been preserved. It's, it's a, just an exterior essentially.
So just to repeat this, to be sure I'm getting it, about thirty percent of the back will be raised and taken away. What's left will be gutted on the inside and you're going to move it forward and cannibalize part of the lawn. A shell that's going to be there.
The exterior will be moved forward, yes.
Sort of question on landscaping, if I may? Your, was it slide nineteen you were talking to, Madam?
Yes.
Do you have a list of all the plants, certainly how big they are, where they're going to go and so forth?
Yes, on the plans that were submitted, just because you can't see it really on this, this scale, but on the plans we were, that were submitted, we had a plant list with quantities and then the size of installation.
Talk about the, on plants chosen, percentage of natives and how they affect pollinators and wildlife.
Yes, so currently, as it's designed, we have about fifty percent natives. And so it's a very fairly small site and there's not a large plant list. We can make some swaps and actually get that percentage up to probably seventy or eighty percent. But a few of the plants that were selected, specifically like the ilex canata sky pencil. It's a, a plant that you really don't have a native option for. It gets about two or three feet wide and six to eight feet high and it's an evergreen. So that essentially helps make a, instead of like using a fence in tight spaces, you can use ilex canata sky pencil and get a vegetative fence. So I think there's about seventeen of those and specifically around the transformer, we use some of those as well. But again, there's not really a native that has that same size constraints. But we can do, do some swaps to get a higher percentage, probably around seventy to eighty percent.
Just the lawn area. Why not? Some conservation minded folks say, well, let's eliminate lawn and put a wildflower meadow in. And once they're established, they kind of just go along on their own. Don't take a lot of, a lot of care. You don't have to cut them with a gas powered lawnmower. They look nice, they're pollinator friendly, but you didn't choose that. Could you walk us through?
Yeah. So I did want to design some lawn area on the site as a residential use. You know, people, you know, most houses have a lawn. It's quite a small area and it's nice too, if you have a pet or you're, you're walking your dog to not have them go into a wildflower meadow with ticks and so forth. So.
Walk your dog in this small lawn and I'm sure the lawn's going to get maintained very long.
Well, people should clean up after their pets. I think that's pretty established.
Those are my current questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm not sure I fully understand or understood what you said during your presentation. In the site plan review set that we were given on page S D nine, it shows, I think, three large existing trees. Will they remain or are they removed?
I'm not sure I have S E nine. Okay, so the we have here, the one on the corner here. Are you talking about the three in the front right along means?
Yes.
There. So the one furthest east kind of closest to the town hall, that is remaining. The other two, which are going, going to be directly in front of the moved building, those would be removed.
Okay, why are they shown in the drawings?
On the landscape plan, they're shown for removal. This was just a conceptual rendering before the, the landscape plan was developed, I believe.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Hollister. I, I think you, you touched on this a little bit in your introductory remarks, but because this property is located within the historic district, do you believe that it needs a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission before the issuance of a building permit?
Yes.
And then in, in, your knowledge, which is pretty extensive about eight thirty G, are there any limitations in scale of a building, either in the way that eight thirty G, you interpret the eight thirty G statute or in the case law? Any limitations on massing or scale of a structure, either on a standalone basis or relative to the neighborhood in which it's situated? As long as it conforms to, or as long as it doesn't compromise the, the structure in this case, public health or public safety, are there any limitations on scale to a building?
Well, obviously there's nothing in the text of the statute that would suggest that. I suppose we can conceive of a situation in which the massing or the bulk or the height of the building could be could create a public health and safety concern. I, I will tell you, in thirty-two years, I'm not aware of any eight thirty G court case where building height or massing or bulk of that type has been the decisive issue. The applicants have had the good sense to design and, and submit buildings that basically may not conform to everyone's ideal structure, size and massing, but you know, are, are not certainly don't create health and safety issues and are otherwise compatible with the neighborhood. So that's a long answer to your question. There, there really is no no legal limit, but there's a, there's a practical limit.
But is there? I mean, the, the practical limit is really just on, it's almost like the consciousness of the developer to have some sort of synchronicity with the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, in theory, if we're going off of what you just said, this could be a ten-story building or fifteen-story building, as long as it doesn't compromise public health or safety.
That's correct.
So was this designed as a five-story building just out of a preponderance of modesty? I mean, it's fantastic. So, but in theory, it could be ten or greater stories.
I'm sorry, could it, could a story, could it be ten stories or greater?
Ten or greater stories or fifteen or greater stories, as long as it doesn't compromise public health or safety.
Yes, it could be, but in thirty-two years, I'm not aware of any application ever made under eight thirty G with that dramatic a scale relative to surroundings. Just hasn't happened. Could, it could. That's right.
I'd like to continue with some questions about what I think is the heart of the matter here, which is the need for affordable housing versus the need to preserve historic and cultural resources in our town.
Could you just speak a little louder?
I said, well, I think the heart of the matter for me here is the need for affordable housing in New Canaan versus the need to preserve historic and cultural resources. And by my count, there are twenty-one properties in our relatively small historic district. I don't know the number of properties overall in the town of New Canaan. I'm going to guess five thousand if we're at seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred housing.
Housing units. So I mean, this is less than half a percent of the land in New Canaan is in a historic district. You said that we're at what, two point nine four percent of our housing stock is considered affordable? So now we're weighing half a percent of the land against three percent of the land that's already, or three percent of the housing units that are affordable. So I mean, we do have to take this into consideration. And I would like to personally request that we get an opinion from the historic district commission as we're allowed to under eight point one dot, dot, E dot, one on items such as overall contribution of this structure to the historic district, the uniqueness or the value of the existing structure, what elements of the structure make it valuable to the historic district, which items should be preserved? And if they have any thoughts or guidelines on how historic properties should be redeveloped into multifamily, you know, in a sensitive way. So that's just a request to the planner. The second thing is a question that I wanted to ask you, Mr. Hollister.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could I respond to what you just said before you go on? I, I don't want to interrupt you.
Sure.
Okay. We have pondered the issue of whether this commission has the authority to refer this ma, this application, the zoning application to the historic district commission. And our, our belief is, our conclusion is that you don't, because as I told Commissioner Bash, we do have to go to the historic district commission with a formal application. So if the historic district commission were to issue an, an opinion informally or formally before we file, knowing that we are coming to see them with a formal application, I think that would compromise their process and their application review. That we should go to them, which we will, that we won't just get an opinion, we'll get a vote up or down on a certificate of appropriateness. So I, I would be frankly opposed as the applicant's counsel to you referring the application under eight point one of your regulations.
Okay. Well, then I guess I would revise my request to be that maybe the town planner can consult with our council to see if we're allowed to do that. The second thing I wanted to say is that we learned last year from the library application that our town historic preservation community, which may not represent, you know, the state or the national, does not consider moving a historic building to be preservation. I mean, we really hit a lot of pushback with that in the library application last year. And so I wanted to know if the applicant considered leaving the building, the existing house in situ and, and then somehow adding multifamily, you know, to the back as you're proposing, possibly on a smaller scale, but in a way that could be more sensitive to the historic nature of this building.
In general, I can say that the development team considered that option and decided that just was not enough room behind the existing structure to achieve a density that would work.
Okay. And let me just go straight to my density questions. So, you know, next door is a condo development of four units. And based on the density that other, other multifamily and eight thirty G projects have been built at in this town, a, a site of this size, size would support basically anywhere from four to six, possibly eight units if we were going to consider multifamily. So how is twenty units appropriate in your opinion?
We're still dealing with very low numbers. I mean, you can, we can always play with percentages, but twenty units, eight units, four units, th- those are all small numbers and not, you're not overwhelming one property with the density of another. That, that's, that's our assessment.
Would you or have you considered a lower density on the site?
We've considered it, yes.
Would you reconsider it?
Not, not at the moment. This is the plan.
I'll let other people ask questions, but I have a lot more if nobody else does.
This is Commissioner Gasvan. I have two questions. One is for you, Mr. Hollister, first, with respect to the affordability plan in section tab fifteen. If I read that correctly, and this is just a clarifying question, basically, and this goes to your earlier comment about median income. If I read this correctly, the target for the six plans is to lease them to eighty percent or sixty percent AMI, not below that, not to extra low income households.
We will comply with the eight thirty G limits. This is not a, there, there won't be any at fifty percent or thirty percent of AMI or SMI, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that, that, that.
Yeah, no, no, no. This is an eight thirty G set aside. This is not assisted housing.
That's, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Okay. So my second question, and before I go to Mr. Hall, because I, I do have a question for him relative to building, but as long as I have you here in, under tab number two, in your letter, and I'm just going to read a paragraph, and I just want to clarify this. It says, a site-specific regulation has been successfully in more than, has been used successfully in more than fifty developments in Connecticut during the past thirty-one years. in more than fifty developments in Connecticut during the past thirty one years. That eight thirty G has been state law, including Canaan Parish and Millport. My actual question, and this is just um, for my own edification. The fifty developments that you refer to, how, do you know how many of those were actually done under eight thirty G? Or were many of them not actually done applying eight thirty G?
No, those are all eight thirty G developments, every every last one of them.
They they were all eight thirty G applications?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my question.
And ones that I worked on. I mean, I'm not counting statewide. There there's probably more, but that's just ones that I have worked on myself.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I remember because we worked with you on 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 the project here in the Canaan. So my my final question, which is really from probably from Mr. Hall, but perhaps you can answer. Um, if the historic structure and and this is really a design question, but if the historic structure just didn't exist, right, were removed. What percentage of the building is attributable to the existing historic structure? Phrased differently, what if the structure was simply removed entirely and you just replaced it with this building? How would that affect design?
Uh, I mean, I would have to do the the calculation. I don't have that that number off the top of my head. Um, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not fifty percent of the building. It's if I had to guess, it was, you know, twenty percentish of the building.
And so and and this was hard for a non-architect to to understand, but as I looked at the building, it almost looked like it was just sort of snapped on to the end to preserve historic continuity and it, you know, are are there actually gonna be quality differences? Am I correct that it's integrated into the new structure?
It is, yes, yes.
And so I guess the reason this is a question, and it is a question for you is is how is that going to work from a building point of view? I mean, you have a structure that by your earlier comments about your belief that it's structural and sound, except is very old being integrated with a brand new building. How does that work?
I I mean, it's not really a a big deal at all. I mean, it's it's done every single day here in this land of of old buildings, you know, I would say fifty percent of the projects we work with have some sort of older home building associated with it and you, you know, you just build the new structure, you know, you would align the, you know, floors that we need to align uh, with the existing structure. Um, yeah, you just literally make it work. I mean, it's not really a a big you know, impediment for for the construction.
Is there any possible way to end up with an answer to what percentage of the original structure really ends up being there when you're done in order to shore it, move it?
Well, there's no way that we could answer that because we don't know what percentage of the original structure is actually even there today. Because the inside's been changed.
Ken, I'm sorry. Um, just following uh, on the comments that were made about uh, you know, the historical aspect of the building and, you know, would it be better or what is it an option to actually remove the the building itself and maybe move it somewhere so it could be saved? Um, I think uh, that this is nothing more than a historical mask. I mean, you're taking uh, a part of a building and putting it on the front of this new building, which is not in the character of the historical district. It's uh, exceeds the heights, the bulk, um, and um, it's um, uh, as as a historical understanding of our town and um, how important these structures are, um, it's just not a very good thing to be doing. I mean, why are you hiding behind the historical aspect of this building that you're basically dissecting?
I mean, that's that's something our team can discuss and respond to, sir.
Yeah, you know, the uh, renderings, the diagrams, the illustrations that you've submitted, um, everything is on a flat plane, basically. Um, the the scale of that building, you you're on a slope, it's going down.
Right.
Um, it is gonna be huge compared to the building next door and this building.
Well, we did provide, you know, street, street views up and down the street, showing it in context with the the neighborhood.
Well, but you didn't show it from the lower side or the downslope.
We did. There's one from the intersection.
The intersection, that's 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 level.
You can't really, you can't really see it, yeah, if if you're looking from down below in a in a rendering.
Well, I'm
adjacent buildings are in the way.
I just don't think you've painted a an accurate picture of what's really going on in the site in that building. Um, which I think is unfortunate. The uh, parking garage, for example, um, you've got parking that is basically open air. And you've got these tiny little uh, evergreen trees that are gonna block the uh, the lights. Uh, we can look out the window and see uh, the headlights from all these cars that are gonna be parked there. I mean, the maneuvering, uh, when you enter into the complex um, is gonna be very challenging. You have to make a sharp right turn as you're entering, then make a left turn almost immediately. Um, you've got pedestrians that are going to the fitness center that are there walking. And then you've got all your handicap vans, parking spaces there. You got wheelchairs, it's a lot going on in a very small area. Um, I would love to hear more about the traffic impact of of what you're proposing.
So.
So is is there, are there any specific questions related to the traffic or would you like me to review or report?
I think it's a, I think what analysis, turning radiuses, what what have you done to uh, confirm or to to understand that uh, that isn't gonna be an an issue, people coming and going. Plus, when you have a garbage truck backing up to to take out the refuse, um, you know, you've got a lot going on in a very small area. And you've got a mix of pedestrians.
Well, from an access standpoint, you know, again, when you look at a development of this size and you look at, you know, its proximity to the rail and what that anticipated trip generation is, the actual number of trips coming in on this development are very, very nominal. So so again, in the afternoon peak hours, a total of six trips. So three trips coming in, three trips leaving. That's one car every twenty minutes entering and exiting this this driveway. So when you look at the operation of that signal, it operates very well. Obviously, it's a little bit unique from a geometric standpoint, considering how the um, you know, uh, the the two uh, streets kind of come in, but from a signal control standpoint, the volumes are so low. You know, we we consulted with the DOT. We wanted to understand if if they would want us to align our driveway or add as added as a fifth leg of the controlled intersection. And frankly, they said that since the volumes are so low, they would simply, you know, recommend to to continue to have it operate the way that it does today and has for the past hundred years and um, they did not see an adverse impact to it. Um, and I know we did receive comments from the um, Towns Peer Review Consultant. We'll provide, you know, formal written responses to all of those to those, you know, those those comments, but um, the the trip generation is so nominal, you know.
Well, I I understand that, respect that. Um, but what about UPS? Your your trucks that are coming, deliveries, moving vans, um, you know, how has that all functioned at that intersection?
Well, I think a lot of those activities, you know, trash removal, things like that, those will all get coordinated to be done at off hours so that, you know, similar to. Similar to, similar to anyone.
Amazon's not gonna deliver and. What?
It it happens all the time. It happens in major urban centers where they coordinate things like that.
Not in this town. Trash does not happen over after hours. You have to, you have to know the beast you're dealing with. And I, quite frankly, and it's the elephant in the room, you're talking about four trip generations in the morning and six trip trip generations in the evening in a unit that's twenty apartments, uh, nine one bedrooms, eleven two bedrooms, a total theoretically, at least thirty to forty people living in this facility. And you're telling me only four of them are gonna leave in the morning?
We we don't create the trip generation rates. We use industry standards that are established for similar developments and we are within, you know, close proximity to the rail. So there very well likely be, will likely be a lot of pedestrian activity. That's not necessarily based on conventional cars. We, all we can do is, as traffic engineers, all we can do is use the tools available to us. Those are industry standard published trip generation rates that are reviewed by the DOT and your own peer reviews consultant. There were no comments regarding the trip generation. There was no questioning if those trip generation rates were valid or grossly underestimated. Um, these are industry standards. And again, from a peak hour trip generation standpoint, there may be twenty units, but people come and go at different times. And from a, you know, we look at that peak hour.
What's the peak hour?
Um, we confirmed it's it's the AM peak hour between uh, during that morning rush hour, and then it's the afternoon peak hour between four and six P M.
Morning?
Uh, between seven and nine.
Between seven and nine. So in those two hours, only four trips are gonna be generated?
No, in a in a peak hour. So we look, we we analyze the
On a single in in
In a single hour.
Nine timeframe, eight trips are gonna be generated?
No, there'd be during a peak.
You understand it then.
Sure, during a peak sixty minute period between that seven to nine A M. So when the most trips within an hour, there'll be, that that'll be the the new trips added to the development. Now, this lot is already used today. There are surplus parking for town hall employees that utilize that lot today. There are existing vehicles which come in and out of that driveway today. And over the uh, past several years of of accident analysis, there's no accidents related with that. And in fact, I would argue if this development was still utilized as an office, it would generate far more trips than what are gen- what what are anticipated to be generated by the proposed residential facility.
How many parking spots are there today?
About fourteen? There are a number of other commercial uses that could occupy this building today, which would generate far more trips and be used by the proposed residential development.
I've I've been in that parking lot. Don't you access it? I'm sorry, this is John Chris again speaking. Um, you entered the that parking lot from the back.
No, we're utilizing the existing driveway in its current location on Main Street. We're simply proposing to widen it from the twelve feet that it is today to twenty two feet to allow for better um, ingress and egress.
When I look at your map here, and essentially you're using about every bit of the site you possibly can. Okay, so you're cannibalizing, use that word again, forty feet moving forward right up until almost onto the street. Um, so that on you're um, getting rid of the third of the house, forty thirty percent of the house, could have got the red inside. You gotta keep the facade, assuming it's structurally intact. Let's see where that goes. You have this strip of uh, entryway in order to get to the proposed parking in the back where you turn around and go inside. What you need for larger trucks, I guess those garbage trucks that are coming two in the morning. And then go into the underground parking. We have this tiny strip next to the uh, west side uh, condominiums where I think if you're skinny, you could walk through it. Um, essentially, every bit of this site is being used. And if I think about the view shed of our um, historic district and from our town green and the Veterans Memorial and so forth, significant amounts of this brand new building are gonna be seen. And so I I see this as perhaps having a uh, material and permanent change to the view set, view shed of um, a dear old friend, which is our town green and our historic district. And this seems to be a very material change to me, um, and one that is worrisome.
So I have a couple with the architect, are we keep going?
Just one quick question. Um, I believe you did a level of service analysis in that intersection. Uh, what what was it?
Uh, so that intersection operates at a level of service C. For both the AM and the peak period. Yes, and it maintains that same level of service.
It it doesn't change.
Does not, there's no degradation.
Can I just ask a question about the, one of the traffic man?
Of course.
Get your guy back up there. So I mean, I I guess, kind of like Mr. Chris, I wasn't familiar with the fact that people are currently using the driveway today to exit. So I'm having a hard time because I haven't witnessed it happening. You're basically exiting that driveway in the middle of a signalized intersection without a signal.
Correct.
So how you just wait until you think there's a break in the traffic to try and make a left turn or right?
I believe that's how it operates today, and that's how the DOT, considering the 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 size of the development and the anticipated trip, that's how they recommended to continue to 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 operate.
Did the DOT give you that in writing?
We have email correspondence with with both, um, uh, yes, both the district.
Please get a copy of that.
Sure. Yeah, and we had conversations to summarize it.
I have a quick question about that. Um, for the back parking lot, there is another egress for it as opposed to just off Main Street, and that's through the driveway along City Hall right here.
Not for vehicular, that's just for pedestrian access.
No, no. Yeah, I I agree. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, people park there who come to this meeting.
Right, but they don't drive, they they exit onto Main Street. There's no way to drive a car from here to there.
No, I think there is.
No, that's my cottage. That's my cottage.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Architect questions?
I I do, if that's if if another commissioners have further questions for you.
Wait, I have one last question. Um, you said you reached out to the DOT about this width of the driveway?
Yes.
And you said they asked you to widen the driveway?
Yes, and we and processed that through a a minor driveway modification through an encroachment permit.
So what will be, what is the proposed width of the driveway that's approved by the DOT?
Twenty two feet. We haven't gone through that process yet, but that's what we're proposing to widen it to.
So we don't know if the DOT will agree with that or we think they will.
Uh, based on our conversations, that was the direction they they gave us.
So twenty two feet is what the DOT signed.
Okay. If you could come up soon.
So i- in terms of what was um, driving your architectural design and the scale of this design, um, was there a minimum level of density that drove this to design?
Well, I think I think you would have to talk to the owners uh, to get an answer as to what a minimum.
But I'm asking you, sir. Was there a minimum level of density that you were given some guidelines for to come up with this design?
Yes.
Okay, is that the, would you say that's the primary driver of your design as opposed to, let's say, what's in the public interest of the surrounding neighbors?
Uh, no, it's a combination. You know, we went back and forth with the, you know, the client numerous times on on various things.
So in your mind, sir, um, this design in this scale is consistent with what's in the public interest of surrounding neighbors?
Uh, yes, because of the need for the uh, moderate income housing, yes.
I'm I'm talking, I'm talking about surrounding neighbors. We can talk, talk about public interest.
Well, I think everybody has a different opinion.
I guess another way of putting it is, if you could put yourself in the shoes um, of a surrounding neighbor, would you be content or satisfied with the architectural design that's been presented to us?
I mean, that's in the eye of the beholder.
Would you personally? And I, if you could please be frank?
I don't know what I would think. I I don't, I don't live near, near there, so.
But sir, this is affecting, this is affecting our community. It's affecting.
Sure, I I understand.
So we wanna do things in terms of architectural design that are inconsistent with that public interest.
Sure.
And that's the line of questioning, you know. Under eight the eight thirty G, then how we define public interest might be fairly narrowly defined.
Sure.
But that's why I'm trying to get your expert opinion as the designer.
I mean, I I feel that we did the best we could in the interest of the town and the client in terms of what the goal of the project was.
Which was to add a minimum number of units to this parcel, right?
There were multiple factors involved, but.
Do you think that's one of the primary ones?
You'd have to ask them. I I can't answer those kind of questions.
Okay, would if if you just uh, if you could have had a blank canvas, is this the type of design that you think is appropriate for the setting?
I think for the scale of project, it's it's what we would do. Sure.
But for the scale of the projects first, so for the density of the project.
Well, I mean, everybody has all different ideas. I mean, some people would probably rather it be a park or, you know, a museum or something. It it's it's hard for me to speak of what. Would be best in an ideal scenario for. For a town.
Maybe the best way to think about that is if you were the person most affected by it, which is one of the surrounding neighbors. And I think we should think of the whole community that way.
Um, I have some questions for you. So you said the plan is compliant with state fire and building codes?
Yes.
So I'm not an architect, I'll preface it with that, but looking at the site plan or the architectural plans, it looks like. If I'm a resident and there's a fire in the building and I have to exit, I'm going to take the stairwells. Down to the parking garage.
Uh, we've already addressed that with the fire marshal and have a alternate way of of getting out.
And what is it?
Uh, there's along that way where there's the uh. The grading along the west side, there there's access that way. We're putting a little connection into that back. And then from the rear stairway, the the door will go out to the back rather than to the to the inside.
Okay, so you're gonna then exit to a sidewalk or something along the side of the property?
Right.
And so I'm assuming then that cuts into the minimal landscaped area that you were already providing.
I believe that was just ground cover that was over there.
Okay. Um, and then I was also wondering. You know, the height of this is significant, as I think we've all alluded to, partly driven by the density. Um, the floors appear to be ten feet tall. Is there? Any way that the the floor height could be reduced to nine feet?
Uh, we could certainly consider that within the team.
And see what effect that has on the overall impact of the development.
Yeah, we'll discuss it with the the team will respond.
Remember the question on snow, if I may?
Sorry. Well, I'll take it off site.
Yeah, so you'd have big trucks go in there and. But skipper, skip loader to.
Uh, we'll, we'll have to, we can address those those questions, but I I would have to talk to the team about how that's going to get handled.
So you don't know?
I personally don't know.
Is anyone here now? Or you haven't thought about it?
Said something you're dressed.
Well, Leonard D'Andrea, th- when you look at the site plan, there's, as I said earlier too, there's actually less asphalt. In this development than there is existing. And you have parking spaces that stick out. Uh, a a bit, but you you're not going to be plowing underneath the um. The building itself. And then in the back, that little open area in the back, that could literally be hand shoveled. So this is a development that has very little concern about snow removal, my my opinion.
Sir, you said the word stick out. Can you work with me on this one? So I'm looking at the the design. And it has the um. Uh, entryway from the street uh on the uh, I guess mostly the east side. Right, northeast corners. Some of the cars that are parked under the building will be making that from the building.
On the east side.
On the east side, so I'm coming in from Main Street on the proposed entryway.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And so uh, there'll be this line of really skinny trees along the that border with the um. House that's owned by the town.
East side, right.
Right. And so on my right, there would be some cars parked. On my right, I'll be able to see, and some of them are potentially uncovered from the building.
So let's see if I'm following you. So it it, when you come in the driveway.
Yes, sir.
You'll come to the. You you'll, you'll come to the end, let's say, that's it, that's what's in front of you. You'll actually see the refuse enclosure and you'll take a right. And then you will turn left in a twenty-four foot wide aisle. To access the parking spaces under the building on both sides. On the east side is where they'll be partially projecting beyond the building limit.
The cars that are parked will be beyond.
Correct, on the east side.
In other words, let's say this is the roof of the building here, so a car will be sticking out a little bit.
Correct. I I I think I'm seeing how you're saying, yes. So if here, if if this was the building face east side. And this is the car, and probably you will have oh, three quarters of the car projecting beyond the building.
So if I'm standing. I'm lean, I'm looking at this building, I'm gonna look at a parking lot with one of the. At the towers sticking out from the building.
Believe that's with the landscaping as proposed, that's the idea of the green wall, so you would not see those.
The green wall is on the um side of the. Houses uh.
Correct.
It would still be visible, everything from the street and walking by.
On the east side, we do not have the six to eight foot narrow, two to three foot um. Evergreens, we have um dogwood shrubs and um inkberry shrubs, so they're going to be more. Full, they're not a two to three foot narrow skinny tree, as you said.
Well, I I have inkberry on my property and uh they don't get that wide, or maybe three foot, and they're pretty old. Plants, maybe four foot.
I've seen them get six to eight feet, so it could be a different variety that you have there. I think six to eight varieties of inkberry, ranging from two to three feet up to six to eight, eight feet tall.
Just to wonder how much it's salt and other damage tends to be.
Inkberry is very good with salt, um their salt tolerance. They're actually evergreen, that's known for their uh salt tolerance.
I was just trying to get a sense of uh where you're going to put the snow. It's it's going to be on that driveway and in the back, we have to.
I think.
To go underneath.
As Lynn said, most of it is building coverage and then the um small amount of parking that's. Exposed, there's room in the back and it could be taken away if necessary on a larger storm.
So if it's not taken away, it gets plowed to where?
Uh, to the back area, but I don't, I don't even know that you need to plow. It's a one and a half spaces in the back that are exposed um from the building. Maybe you'd snow blow it.
I'm hearing though that the um, there is going to be exposed parking.
Some on the east side, so you can see the building limits. I don't know if you can point to that, Lynn?
I'm sorry?
The building limits on the east side. Yep, and then the parking projects maybe. Fifteen feet past that.
It's more than that.
If a space is eighteen feet.
Space is twenty according to the dimensions. And it looks like probably eighty to ninety percent of the. Parking space is exposed to what? So you'll have the majority of fifteen parking spots being loaded with snow. What do you do with it?
So that would be shoveled and taken away? Or move to the back?
Car brush or something, then it gets dumped in the. In the roadway, probably. And so then it has to be taken away, but. I'm hearing those, there's a lot of. Visibility of a, essentially, we're going to have a very visible parking lot in our historic district.
Yeah, I think there's a parking lot there currently, but this, you know, would provide screening along the side, like I said, four to six foot tall shrubs. Um, just green headlights.
It's okay, it'll be hidden by the garbage. Thank you. Thank you.
So a question, Mr. D'Andrea, did the um your calc on, your calculation on four thousand six hundred fifty gallons? Per day of sewage flow from the proposed site? Is that based on uh, let me see if I'm thinking this correctly, a hundred fifty gallons per day for each bedroom?
The um.
It's not twenty percent.
We prepared a sanitary sewer connection summary report and and all those uh calculations are in there. And we use uh discharge quantity per capita day, seventy-five gallons per day.
I I'm sorry, say it again, sir?
Uh, seventy-five gallons per day per capita.
Per capita, okay. But the, I think it's Connecticut's uh, I think it's deep that that says um. I don't know if it's statutory, but their design guidelines, I believe, are a hundred fifty gallons per day. Is this should be the design flow of sewage system, public sewage system?
You may be saying that that's per bedroom, we assume.
Per bed, yeah, that's what I said.
Per bedroom, that's how you get to the one fifty. Well.
Not, no, then the math is in sync.
Uh, well, it does, and and this is no different than the last report we did. And this is what's being reviewed by your your DPW. So if 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 we are in disagreement with those numbers that we're using, we'll certainly correct it, but I don't think that's the case.
There could be a difference between seventy-five gallons per day per capita. This and a hundred fifty gallons per day per bedroom, disagree with that?
Discharge quantity per capita day, seventy-five gallons per day, eleven times two's bedrooms, times two persons per bedroom, times seventy-five gallons per day is thirty, three thousand three hundred gallons per day. Nine times one bedroom, times two persons per bedroom, times seventy-five gallons per day, one thousand three hundred fifty. We're not falsifying these numbers. These are the numbers we use on previous projects throughout the area.
Uh.
So if you're in disagreement with this number, that's something you should take up with the DPW, and we will do this in response to DPW comments.
So so what I'm, what I'm citing is what I've read. Could be wrong, but I believe what I'm citing is an article I read recently, I think it's from Connecticut's deep site. That recommends for sewage system a hundred fifty gallons per day for each bedroom.
That's right. That's that's exactly right.
Engineer Copeland, I need you to come to a microphone, please.
I'm Maria Copeland. Uh, town engineer, I just wanted to clarify that you both are saying the same thing. Calculations are based on two people per bedroom. Seventy-five gallons per day, that's what per capita.
Why would they assume two people per bedroom? It's conservative.
Yeah, I just want to assume two people per bedroom necessarily.
So, but his calculations are based on a hundred.
Okay, so now that you're here, I'm glad you're here. So I tell me if this is wrong, Ms. Copeland, because I'm trying to think of it in terms of, do we have the overall infrastructure to support these kind of high density units that are? Um, coming on along with just, you know, our existing capacity. And and so the question is this, if I'm thinking of this correctly, tell me if this is flawed in any way. I believe we have around ten thousand household, uh, ten thousand households, I believe, that are connected to. The public uh sewer system. Is that correct? Our ten thousand.
Well, I don't have the exact number. I do have what. Receive at the treatment plant on an average day is approximately a million gallons per.
So.
So the increase of the. Remind me, it's forty-six fifty? I think, Lonnie?
Excuse me?
That.
The gallons for um, four thousand six hundred fifty gallons per day.
So um, at that point, you're talking. Fraction of a percent. Contribution, total contribution to the treatment.
Okay, I'm I'm just trying to get it, the the math in a different way that I think conforms to what the Connecticut statutory guidelines on and. On sewage uh flow, design capacity.
So so the estimates that we have seen are consistent. Um, with the guidelines and as to whether or not.
What's your understanding of the guidelines from the state?
So what you're, so your interpretation is that it's a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom?
Yeah.
Um, which is equivalent to seventy-five gallons per person based on a two-bedroom occupancy. A two-person occupancy.
Okay, and that would give us total design capacity in the town for how many gallons per day?
No, so so. These calculations, the 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 thresholds are very conservative.
They are, they're a hundred fifty percent of what I think it's it's, the assumption is roughly a hundred gallons per day. Um, per bedroom, and they apply a safety factor, I believe, of one point five times. So that's the conservatism. In their estimates. So based upon that conservatism, what should be the total sewage design capacity of our town?
Well, our treatment plant is was designed at one point seven. As your average and five point five million gallons per day is your. So that's what the treatment plant itself was designed at. Currently, we're receiving effluent of, on average, about a million gallons.
Okay.
Um, and so we do have in non-rain events, we do have sufficient capacity at the treatment plant. The A E com letter actually makes reference to available capacity being in the thirty to forty percent available capacity.
Yeah.
At the treatment.
I- i- in my concern, Ms. Copeland, is that, and again, I'm thinking of this from an infrastructure perspective, is if if we have. Two storms in two thousand and twenty-one. Where we had seven million gallons per day flowed to our treatment facility, and we have peak design flow, I think, five and a half million, is that correct?
Five and a half million per day was the design.
So we're around on those two events. Were above thirty percent of our peak design flow capacity at the treatment plant that required, in order, an effort from our superintendent of that facility. To not cause any potential issues. What could those issues potentially be? And this is what gets into um a public health issue, I believe. Is that had Mr. Rogers and his excellent team not taken those steps, I imagine along with you as well. Then we would have potentially had affluent stormwater discharge. Into the Five Mile River. That's one of the things that was discussed at the W P C A meeting. That's a public health issue, especially when two miles of the Five Mile River watershed is already classified, but the state is polluted.
And as we've discussed, that's why we are in the process of doing our I N I studies, influence infiltration study. So that's existing conditions right now. Um, and we've talked about what the percentage. Increase that both projects would impact and that they are fractions of a percent. Um, that we are looking at opportunities and getting results in the fall. From this study from A E com of where we can go and we can mitigate. Um, opportunities within our own system to get those numbers down so that. Five point five million is a typical peak on a really intense storm event and not seven million, so that we don't have to. Bring um other carousels online during a storm event, so we don't have any. Um, but again, there's, you raise a couple, you raise three points, one, the treatment plan, one, the conveyance system, and one, the calculation. So I think.
Yeah, and and I apologize, in the calculation before, I think the, I should have been thinking of it as we have ten thousand. Um, individuals uh that I believe are tied to the, roughly tied to the public sewer system overall. Is that roughly correct?
Well, then, ten thousand at your hundred gallons per day is pretty equivalent to what we're seeing as.
Is, but then we have to incorporate, you know, again, the safety factor of one and a half times.
That's what, so your average.
That's kind of your guideline.
So your average is one million, which we're seeing, so that is consistent. And where the design of the treatment plant is for one point seven million dollars per day. So that's where A E com says that there still is available.
Right.
Capacity. We do, the design of the treatment plant allows for peak instances of five point five. We have recorded two instances last year where we got up to seven million. And that is because of flow and infiltration due to storm events. That's increase in flows that go to the treatment plant. Um, but again, we are in the process of addressing where those instances are happening, so we can go in and mitigate.
Okay.
Those measures.
So so just to clarify, and this is obviously important for a couple of applications, we have enough design capacity at the treatment facility right now. For dry days. We sometimes, most of the time, but not, certainly not all the time, have enough to design capacity for very wet days. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't had. Like you said.
Twice in two thousand twenty-one, we had a two hundred year storm twice.
We did not have, you know, but we did not break permits, but we've always missed.
I I totally understand that, and again, I think that's due to the extraordinary efforts of a really good team. But we had, correct me if I'm wrong, a two hundred, what should have been a two hundred year storm twice. In two thousand and twenty-one, the chances of that happening are one in forty thousand. So maybe it's not that, maybe we've kind of reached a point, maybe it's climate change or other factors, where what we've. Thought of as a two hundred year storm might occur much more frequently. And that's my concern in terms of our existing infrastructure. Um, right now, and our ability to satisfy in what could be a much more frequent. Event, high intensity, short duration storms, to handle the amount of discharge that's coming from our existing.
Um, Mr. Bash, yeah, we we need to get back to.
Fair enough, fair enough, but but you see the point. I think the point is, I don't, I don't think we should, you know, I was saying, unless you say otherwise, that we have enough capacity overall for. Potentially, you know, high intensity storm events.
Let's, we, this debate is, it's ten fifteen, I think we have a lot of other questions here, so let's, let's move on, please.
And and I would, I would just conclude by saying, again, our our computation are conservative, and this this development is going to eliminate an old. Perhaps very leaky lateral for a new one that will not leak, and that's a positive.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners?
I have just a couple more. The first one, I don't know who to address to, so I'll just ask it, and whoever's the right person can jump up. How do emergency vehicles access this site? I mean, I know the fire station's right across the street, but what's? What's the plan if there was an emergency, a fire? How do we get vehicles in and out, again, given the? The complications of being right in the middle of an intersection? the complications of being right in the middle of an intersection?
We we're gonna get somebody gonna jump up?
We're deciding who's going to jump up.
It's ten sixteen now.
Looks like it's me. I'm sorry. So I I think I was trying to listen to your question carefully. Your question is access by emergency vehicles. Is that the question?
Right, including fire trucks.
So the way I see that is we we have the wide driveway. The most likely the emergency vehicle would come into the driveway and and park there and go underneath into the garage to the elevator. Anybody exiting that building is going to come down through the elevator.
Okay.
In that emergency situation.
What about ladder access to the various perimeter, various perimeter areas of the building?
So I I'm not prepared to answer that question. I'm not sure if there's been any feedback from the fire marshal in this development. But has.
Commissioner Chris, again, I remember.
There's been no formal submission of anything from the fire marshal that we have spoken, and that was not one of the concerns brought up by the fire marshal.
Commissioner Chris, in another application, we had some people speak to us about the ability of ladder trucks to maneuver and to set up. Many of them have these rollers braces on the side in order to stabilize the vehicle, take a fair amount of space. Some of the ones from neighboring towns that may be on the scene because our ladder is off doing other other good deeds.
Sure.
And so some of those even larger than the ones in our town. And there was concern expressed regarding the ability of these um safety vehicles to set up safely and appropriately. And I'm trying to get a sense of what the dimensions are of this particular site and whether some of these very large vehicles that need a fair amount of space to maneuver can maneuver safely when lives are at stake.
So so typically, it's about the distance from the building to an inaccessible road. So in this case, the road is, you know, not far at all from the building, so you wouldn't need to provide a fire lane or anything of that type. That's why in separation distances like this, they require fire ratings of the walls. So the wall on the closest side would be fire rated so that if some event like that happened, there would be time to evacuate the building and and treat it appropriately.
But I just wonder if there is a fire on a top floor and people cannot escape, and you have to get them down through a ladder, whether a ladder can access that area safely and quickly in order to rescue people.
Sure. Um, I mean, that's not a code provision that you have to be able to get a ladder there. You know, we do have balconies that are accessible to the apartments. We would have the fire ratings that are required. I mean, in technical terms, if you're really thinking of how a fire truck would get there, I mean, you could park on the street, you can park in the driveway, you could park in town hall, access it from all different different directions.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to code. I'm thinking of practical safety of people's lives.
Well, the the building will conform to, you know, all the fire codes. So we can't even get it approved if it doesn't. So.
I understand that, but I'm not talking about fire codes. I'm talking about specifics of this building, this site, and the ability of potentially large fire apparatus to maneuver safely for potentially lifesaving needs and I'm not hearing anything that's telling me that this is something that's been thought about in enormous detail.
Well, it it fulfills the code, which which is what addresses those life safety issues. So, you know, that's the primary consideration for it. That's why those codes exist so that you're not allowed to build buildings that they can't, you know, rescue people from.
Have you done measurements regarding some of the fire apparatus that may be on site and to discuss with fire experts their ability to maneuver some of this apparatus in a safe and prompt manner?
No, we've had discussions with the fire marshal.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, this this hearing is is going to be continued. So commissioners, if there are questions that you additionally come up with, but any burning questions anyone would like to ask before we go to the next step of continuing this? Okay, um, I'll just I'll note one or two things. One is, um, you know, Commissioner Cassavant, your question struck me as, you know, what is the target market for affordable housing? I remember Dr. Poland, your consultant, saying that the greatest need for affordable housing is way further down in the 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 income strata than you're targeting. So I'll just say that. Um, second thing I'll say is, yeah, look, I think it's acknowledged that this is a historical building. And I guess what you're saying is a historical building is simply seventy percent of that building and the surroundings, the sense of place has nothing to do with this from your perspective. So just two comments there. Attorney Hollister? So tell tell me if I'm right. I I think we have your approval for continuation to September twenty-seventh.
That's correct.
Okay, great, perfect. Second question for you is, and I I know that there's lots of moving parts, I'm not going to hold this to you, but maybe just manage me is is for the August twenty-third meeting. Do you think you'll be ready to have responses to our advisors or or just just guide me?
Well, the reason I would hesitate is we're going to be working hard to finish Weed Street by that time. So I I'll 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 say we'll probably make your next meeting.
Okay.
But our priority over the next three weeks is going to be.
Is weed street. We're gonna we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so for the August, do you have any other, uh, before I continue this, close this off? Do you have any other comments?
No, no.
I have one request, similar request I made for the Weed Street application. I make the same one here. Um, I requested statistics for the rest of the state of Connecticut for similar towns.
Yes, we we so we've done that.
Income levels and.
Yes.
Capacity and size.
Yes.
Where they stand on the affordable housing percentages.
We have done that. It's part of the package that we're putting together.
Okay.
Okay, so I think for the August twenty-third meeting, um, for the purposes of this specific application, uh, we'll try to devote that to the input from the public. Um, we'll also look to hear from our advisors. And then Attorney Hollister, my guess is, which is fine, I get your point. We'll 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 focus on those two pieces as opposed to specific to your responses specific to this application. Okay.
All the comment and and the peer reviewers.
And the peer reviewers. That's fine. Okay, great. Um. Okay, so this application is continued to August twenty-third by getting the right date. I've been getting dates wrong tonight.
Thirty is the last Tuesday.
But uh, we did the twenty-third, so not to conflict with Labor Day. Okay, so this is continued. Which takes us into seven fifty-one Weed Street. Attorney Hollister, are you comfortable if I do not read through items eleven, twelve, and thirteen and just go into it? Okay, great. Thank you. People, I'm sure, are getting bored of me reading things. Um. So what I would like to do, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, is the last meeting we had concerning seven fifty-one, we we took public input. Um, what I'd like to ask is if there is anyone who would like to provide public input on seven fifty-one Weed, who has not already spoken to the application, anyone in the room? Yes, sir. If you can, please keep it to a couple of minutes, please.
I'll try. Um, my name is Bart Cud. Live on Conrad Road, which is nowhere near the proposed development. My background is, um, I was a New York City firefighter for thirty-five years, the last thirteen of which were battalion chief and currently retired. So, um, before I get into the the fire matters, just a couple of brief things regarding some things that were um in the application, which I think are inaccurate. The the application itself, page two, it's um an appropriate location for multifamily residential redevelopment. And the the fourth paragraph states that the proposed building is comparable to nearby buildings. The first building it states is two fifty-eight Elm Street. That's a a commercial building, industrial building in a business district, no comparison. So that building shouldn't be listed as a comparable building. View Apartments, point eight miles away. Um, Millport, the New Canaan Parish, they whatever, they they're not close to this particular building. The paragraph below that mentions some addresses and stuff like that, which I did a little little research on the um the the buildings, the seven oh five Weed Street, it's five condominiums, none of which are bigger than twenty-one hundred square feet. The the other addresses, um, three thirteen Elm, three fifteen, three thirty-nine, and seven eighty-one Weed Street, were all private homes, as you guys know, one acre zoning between five and seven thousand square feet. This one hundred and thirty-three thousand square foot proposed building is nothing like anything in that neighborhood, not even resembling it. Um. I'll move on to the to the fire issues. So the the proposed building, again, as you guys know, four-story, type five wood frame building. Exterior walls, two by six wood, interior, two by six and two by four, half inch and five eight gypsum board. Um, the um the support for the roofs and the each floor and the top floor, they're pre-engineered wood trusses. There's not many people left in the room. Bunch of architects here, architects love trusses. It can span wide distances. They support a lot of weight. From a firefighter's perspective, they're horrible. Fire spreads right through them. They can collapse rapidly. Okay, I I don't know. The the building is going to be sprinkled. I'm sure that these spaces where the trusses are are not protected. Okay, major concern. Um. The um it mentions in the application that the the building has wireless smoke and CO2 detection systems. I'd like a little clarification on that. Does that mean that they're battery operated, not hard hardwired? Is the um, central station, the wireless part of it? I did a renovation of my house. I had to have hardwired smoke detectors. Little clarification on that. Um. The Mr. Kingsbury mentioned, he did a great presentation. He mentioned the scrub area when you pull fire apparatus into that entrance to the building, the the that that's that, you know, you the inside of the U shape. The whole outside of that building is inaccessible to a fire apparatus. It's all grass. You can't drive a fire truck on grass. Like, that's that. So if you, there's apartments on both sides of the hallway. If you had someone hanging out a window on the outside of that building, they're jumping. Okay, that's that. Um, there's been no mention of a collapse zone. So if you had a, yes, it's a fully sprinkled building, but if you had a significant fire in that building, any piece of fire equipment that's in that that U-shaped area or whatever it is, the collapse zone is at least equal to the height of the building. Forty-nine feet, ten and three eighths inches. Every piece of fire apparatus would be in the collapse zone. Um, Mr. Kingsbury also mentioned that six firefighters are on duty, paid firefighters at any given time in town to Canaan. Um. So the uh put out the NFPA standard seventeen-ten, which has to deal with um staffing and things like that or whatever for paid fire departments. Their recommendation, which is all it is, is an engine company that have four members on duty, a ladder company, four members on duty, and the initial alarm deployment uh, for a low hazard situation would be fifteen firefighters. We have six on duty. Okay. So I'll find this here. Find his, he had some recommendations in there, which were excellent. So, um, this is the the quote out of his uh of his presentation. Fire department would be challenged to mount both a fire attack and rescue evacuation of occupants simultaneously with New Canaan's current level of staffing. Um, the ability to effectively evacuate evacuate, treat, and transport residents even due to a moderate smoke condition would quickly quickly overtax New Canaan's fire department's current capabilities. I I think that's kind of significant. Um, when you're talking about respond, this, by the way, this building could never have been built in New York City. That tells you something. I mean, they have stricter building codes than the national codes. You you can only build one or two family structures out of wood in New York City. This could never be built there. And like I said, sprinkles are great. Um, the if you if the fire companies were on the highway, and then you're getting companies, he says, the second alarm companies in Norwalk and Wilton, uh, Norwalk and Westford. I mean, Westford, really? I mean, this is like kind of a joke. It really is. And so in the as you guys have all seen here, July twenty-first letter from the attorney. Okay, so the one of the last sentences is wonderful, you know, oh, I I want to work with all of the team here and work to resolve concerns. Except in the beginning of the letter, um, it refers to, you know, pretty much that the the grant of an extension is made with the reservation of the applicant's claims and right to automatic site approval. So the the attorney is pretty much saying that, well, this thing's getting approved, you know, and the um whatever the term was, the the reasonable things. I mean, there's been some some reasonable suggestions made. Uh, Mr. Kingsbury made some reasonable suggestions. Uh, build the building as a type-two type building. You won't even have to worry about it. You sprinkle the building, the fire will be confined, the apartment, there'll be some smoke, but people could shelter in place. This building's not a safe building, I'm telling you right now. So that's my opinion on this. I I, you know, I wish that the the um I didn't want to beat the the whole sewer thing to to death, but just a quick point about that. We have the capacities, one point seven five, the the current use of one point two five, half a million gallon. The the applicant states in here, the the Canaan Parish, the view, and this building will add sixty-five thousand gallons per day. So I don't know what the the engineer was talking about, about point three. In my calculations, that's taking away thirteen percent of our daily total. As we've heard tonight, this is not the last development that's going to be proposed in this town. So I I think that somebody, the engineer or someone, has to tell us, hey, this is the point that we can go up to and we're we're at risk because there's there's a lot of a lot of projects, a lot of developments.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you. Anybody, anybody else like to address this application? Lynn, anybody in Zoom, Lynn?
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak that hasn't spoken on this application before?
All set. Okay, Attorney Hollister. Um, so going back to our conversation from a couple of minutes ago. So again, just help manage us manage our workload. Um, so you are aiming for for seven fifty-one Weed to provide responses at the August twenty-third meeting? Is that doable?
I I said in my letter, we're we're going to aim for August thirty-first.
Right.
We'll we'll try to, we're going to go as fast as we can.
Okay, so chances are your guest.
I was actually under the impression that your regular meeting was the thirtieth, but I've now corrected that.
Yes, twenty-third.
We will aim for the twenty-third, but.
Okay, kindly keep the planner in the loop, please. Okay, thank you. Um. And just confirming that we have an you've agreed to an extension to close the hearing to September twenty-ninth. Correct. Okay, super. Um, okay, seven fifty-one Weed is continued. Um, okay, seven fifty one weed is continued to the August twenty third meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending, um, commissioners, we are not done yet. I got a few decisions to make. May a chance to try to remember what decisions we could make. Um, okay, item number two, uh, ninety five Country Club Road. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Well, I'll move to approve.
Okay, reasons for approval, Mr. Ward.
This is to add the, a fifth uh, platform tennis court at the country club, in addition to the existing four. Uh, the issues that were discussed were largely location visibility. Doesn't seem to be a problem, it's uh, being built close to the existing four, not closer to the road, so I, I don't see the uh, visibility to be a concern, lighting was the other issue where there was a discussion. Uh, the lighting on the new court would be uh, similar and comparable to the standard lighting for these platform tennis courts, there are already four that have lights. This would be a fifth, it would not create a brand new light source uh, where there are no lights had previously existed. So I, I don't see uh, this as a concern uh, in the neighborhood for a, a lighting problem. And I think the country club uh, has been pretty responsible in the way they have handled uh, even more substantial renovations and construction work recently, so.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Ward, Mr. Turner, I think I heard you second.
Second, yes.
Okay, any further discussion of the motion? Okay, call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Clarence Scornia.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
James Bash.
Yes.
Okay, super. Okay, three eighty eight Springwater was continued. Um, thirty six Harding Brook Road. We closed that, right, guys?
We did.
Okay, do I, do I have a motion for approval or denial? By the way, on, on this one, um, since we're sort of, you know, grappling with a not, you know, what some people feel is not, not completely clear regulation, if um, we can, if somebody wants to make a motion this month, the other thing we could do is um, we could also delay the decision till August, the August meeting.
Uh, this is Commissioner Cassavan, I'll actually move for approval on this.
Okay, reasons for approval?
The reasons for approval are that there are no neighbor objections, it is in compliance apparently with the extent regulation. It is in, in a zone where I believe the architect's description that doing this would provide less massing and make a more attractive um, property causes me to believe that because it is in compliance with the regulation, we should approve.
I would second, and I think that was an excellent description, as much as I might think that I might have problem with the intent of the regulation and how it's maybe expressed, I think the intent of the regulation was to um, maybe uh, uh, give consideration for some of our flat roofed mid-century moderns and some of the other buildings that are not making use of their full height. So I, I would like to us to consider, you know, tha- that being one category of building. Um, I don't think the intent of the regulation was to take pieces, as one person said, pieces of accessory structures for accessory structures at all, but if that's what we intended, we ought to say so, and if it's not what we intended, we ought to say so, so I would I would agree, I'm gonna second this. Um, I'm gonna vote for this, but I hope it's the last time I have to vote for this uh, with this regulation in this form.
Well, it, it's interesting, let, let me ask um, you know, Kent and Dan in particular. Because I see, first of all, I think the intent of the regulation, as I said, or I'm gonna vote for it, but I, I think the intent of the regulation was to allow, you know, to basically do a trade of height for coverage, and you know, the whole idea is if you're not going up, polluting is the wrong word, you know what I mean, but if you're not going up, you know, you, it's, it's all in, it's a good thing. Yeah, and, and I think that was the intent of the regulation. And, you know, I think we were around for when we put this thing together, right, and so, you know, I, I think that's another reason for the intent. Um, it also seems to me, this is the first time, and, and Mr. Rucci, I'm not accusing you of shenanigans, so don't, you know. Um, but, you know, I think this is the first time I've seen this approach. I think when, I remember there was another application in which it was very, very clear that we were doing that trade. Right, um, so, you know, just to comment, I will vote for yes for this, but, but I mean, what, what do you guys, do you guys remember?
I, you know, I, I don't recall exactly, but um, I don't think we ever anticipated um, a, a piecemeal approach. Yeah. It was kind of one structure, and because it was smaller lots and um, you know, it was to prevent the height more than the bulk.
Yeah. I mean, but I think the regulation.
With the piecemeal approach?
Yeah, that's.
I don't know, why is there so much hesitation about?
Well, isn't it because I think uh, it's it, first, you know, I want to say, I, I think the way that Mr. Rucci is interpreting it as written is correct.
Mm-hmm.
So um, I, I don't think we should kind of guide a decision right now based upon what might have been our intention historically. Two, you know, in terms of it, whether it's okay to have disparate parts of um, a parcel be included in, in that restricted coverage. Um, I think it goes back to what John was saying about the idea was a trade off between uh, the, you know, the, the main building um, versus um, these, you know, restricted areas.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, when you take a part of a screen porch and a part of two accessory dwelling units on that parcel, it's much different than I think what hopefully the regulation will be guided to in the future, which is really the trade off between the main building and um, you know, the, the additional building coverage.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason why I threw the closing comment at Mr. Rucci about the fact that it's a special permit, let's remember that, you know, site plan, we're ticking the box, special permit, we have latitude. So, you know, I think if we as a commission turned around and said, no, that's not the intent of the regulation, and maybe people will vote no, but, you know, I, you know, I, quite frankly, I think we would, our decision is defensible either way. Yeah, because you are allowed to interpret the regulations, so.
I have one suggestion for Commissioner Cassavan, he, he could perhaps consider um, requiring them to uh, eliminate half of their plants, all of which are, or half of which are uh, not natives because they chose not to choose them, and uh, replace the non-natives with natives, which are easily done, they just, there are lots of plants they can choose, they just chose not to.
I think that that would improve, improve my motion.
So there are six plants, uh, three are not natives to my count, and.
Okay, your, your condition is all native plants.
Yes.
Okay, okay, anybody else? Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Clarence Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Okay, we, so done, right, guys?
Well, one other matter just under administrative.
Oh, Locust, Locust, sorry, oh. Yeah, okay, item number five thirty nine, Locust, do I have a, a motion for approval or denial? This is an easy one, guys.
John Cris, I, Commissioner Cris, I move we approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Clarence Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on administrative.
Do we need reasons, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, he didn't give a reason.
Fine, I believe.
I didn't know whether it was like a legal thing.
Well, if it's, sure, fire away. Uh, technically, yes, Mr. Engel, you were right.
Two reasons, one, I think the visual and um, other impacts on the town will be de minimis, and second, I think this will increase uh, the level or the ability of people to uh, use their cell phones in town.
Okay, great.
Public safety issue.
Anybody else? Okay, so far, um, under administrative actions, I, I have an item, I brought this up before. Um, the, the P and Z meetings used to begin at six thirty, a long time ago, I think that's what it was. And we moved it to seven to accommodate New York commuters, um, I plead guilty, I was one of them. Um, we're post COVID, uh, what I would like to suggest is we go to a six o'clock start.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Or six thirty?
I'm su- I'm thinking six.
I'm loving that.
These meetings are getting brutal.
If you promise we're done by ten, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're sticking with seven. Yeah, but seriously, is everybody okay with six o'clock?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so Lynn, you and I will work on that.
Um.
Is that for, starting now, right?
Starting with August meetings.
One, one other thing, if I could, John, I know everyone, including myself, wants to go. As a follow up to a conversation, I think we had a couple of months ago on perpetual um, Affordable Housing Committee. Was hoping to get just a, a brief update on that. Given how important I think it is to make headway on that, the other thing I was gonna just again briefly mention is, I think it's important to start to have or, or, or um, put on the docket somewhere, the opportunity for um, two-way dialogue between the public and us, and I know the reservations in doing that, I listened to the eight thirty J meeting that was pretty contentious before, so I totally get the reservations, but I think there's a lot of questions and upset people, and we have the second application, um, and potentially a third one down the road, and I think we, public deserves um, the opportunity to ask questions directly of us and for us to give, you know, feedback to the extent we have the knowledge, maybe along with some experts in town.
One thing I would say is we have the, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask Lynn for an update on the Affordable Housing Committee, I mean, that the commitment is in place to have a permanent committee. That's a commitment, the issue is how do we get there, and quite frankly, we'll see what Lynn has to say from where I said, you know, we, we've been besieged.
I know.
So that's the challenge there. On the public feedback, we have the P O C D coming at us real soon. And so the way the P O C D process will begin in the fall, and that is a very public input intensive process.
Okay.
So that's gonna be on us real soon.
Can that, can, is, does that offer two-way dialogue?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Bring your armor.
That, that, okay.
Be in, in, with public dialogue, yeah.
Lynn, um, what's the latest on the uh, the Affordable Housing um, eight thirty J? Can you, you pulled the mic, so we did submit it.
Yeah, it was submitted in June.
Okay.
Okay.
Has there been any movement on the creation of a committee? Um, not yet, as, as the chairman noted, we have been besieged, so no, there has not been.
So, so my, my concern, and again, it's not to beat a dead horse, is to not be in the situation four years from now.
Right.
Wh- what can we, whatever we can do to kind of show the public and ourselves that we are trying to take mitigating steps so it doesn't happen again, we should do it.
Okay. And, and, but, yeah, look, the I've looked at this many different ways, and my view is if it wasn't for COVID and the state, we would be under moratorium right now.
I agree with you.
Yep, yep, so. Don't, don't get me wrong, we, we have to, I'm not arguing we shouldn't be aggressively.
But I think the public doesn't necessarily, a fair amount of the public doesn't understand that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, one thing that I learned, I'm not even sure if this is factual, it, but is that the cost of New Canaan Parish, even excluding the land cost, was around fifty million dollars. And so if someone were to say, well, you guys should have hedged your bets. Uh, by you guys, I mean, it could just be a number of town bodies planning. It'd be inappropriate to hedge when you're talking about that dollar figure, when no one could have foreseen at the time, a global pandemic, a debt diet, you know, things of that nature. The issue is, I think, that knowledge that we know i- is not shared by a good percentage of the public. And, and that's coming out in frustration. I, look, I didn't like the things that were directed at Lynn and others in that eight thirty J meeting. And I thought if some of these things could have been cleared up ahead of time through their ability to ask questions, the knowledge that we possess and experts in town that can answer some of the more esoteric questions, a lot of that animosity that's misdirected could have been resolved. And, and I think we should do that, you know, it's just for all the reasons that we're thinking.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a question, the, on the um, um, uh, P O C D, have we secured the services of our usual consultant?
Um, no, we're gonna, we're gonna bring up like our.
Yeah, Lynn, I don't think that mic is on.
Right into the mic.
So we haven't secured anyone yet, we have to fi- we have to do an RFP and um, bring, bring someone in that you guys think was appropriate based on the responses that we get.
When's the RFP going out?
We'd have to um, hopefully um, within the next month or two would be the ideal.
Could I add as a, another item here that we need to look at the accessory dwelling unit in question? In the same way, and that has a shorter deadline?
Next month.
Yeah, that's next month. Are you talking about the opt-out potential?
Yeah.
Okay, and by the way, I know because you're steeping the price, the fifty million dollars, that's not, I think the new Canaan Housing Authority was only one and a half million of that, do, do you?
Yeah, that cost nothing near fifty million dollars.
For, for the entire, including state, okay, that's the number I saw bandied about, but I guess not, right?
I have a budget, I, I'll dig it out.
Okay.
Yeah, then, I don't know, still remember.
I, I'm trying to remember, I can't, yeah, I'm too tired, my mind's not working.
That's all right, yeah. Uh, Lynn, did you have anything under administrative act items?
Minutes.
Okay, minutes, um, any changes to June twenty second, June twenty eighth, or July thirteenth minutes? Everybody good? Okay, I think we can vote on these together, a motion for approval.
So moved.
I think I heard Claire mumble.
Yeah.
That Claire mumbling?
Yes.
Okay, can I have another mumble?
Second.
Okay, oh, that was good, I liked that. Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes. Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Clarence Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan, oh, I like that very clear. I love it. John Engel.
Yes.
Okay, everybody get home safe, thank you.
I thought we did all of them.
I do, I think I'm.